I would like to add, under New Business, a discussion about ORYA and possibly a proposed resolution.
Okay, um, yes.
I have a question for Kenny.
Yeah.
Kenny, do you think we have enough information to do that?
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and proposed.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. We have no special announcements this evening, so we'll move right to public comments. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see a big crowd here this evening. I know some of you are here on, because you have to be, but it's nice to see a lot of people anyway. Every person who would like to speak has five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Last week, Kenny, you-
Hey, Bill, I know, we know who you are, but if you want to say Billy Hall, say your name and, just say your name.
Broder. Last week, you lectured me on the, or two weeks, no, two means you, on the right to know law. And then Todd did state correctly that we have a right to talk about this stuff. This is where we come. Then, after he had backed me up in what, my position, then he said, of course, it's only my opinion, which is what Todd will do to try to trivialize the things I say, which, in one case, has just cost the town $250,000 plus legal costs. So I just wanted to point that out. Also, Kitty, you're the one that should have spoken to me, not Kenny and Todd. So, you know, you understand, I have to deal with this sort of thing instead of dealing with you. So I just do the best I can.
Okay.
I noticed Todd said that the budget was in the black. That's if you don't count the $250,000 he just raided from the water fund. The reason I said raided, and by the way, that's hundreds of dollars for each meter in Durham, the reason I said raided is because he's the one that told the people to sue us. And it should have been settled 15 years ago, but there were some misguided people in this town that thought the MOU with the previous owner had some bearing, and it doesn't. You have to go by state law and what's in conquered. So the only thing that's going to happen is, we're either going to pay them off, or we're going to take our water tower. And you've got to understand what you're dealing with. And that's why you need a better legal team, A to Z. Front-page article in Foster's by Todd on ORYA. I want to point out, ORYA, that incident with ORYA has been, has made it to the New Hampshire station TV, it's been on TV in New Hampshire, and two Boston stations, seven and 10. It's also been discussed at length on WRKO. There are lawyers involved. ORYA knows exactly what they're doing. I've talked to a couple of them. The last thing they need is comments by Todd Selick in the front page of the newspaper on Saturday. That's just because Todd wants to run the place. That's the opinion of people involved. And I think, I think that after there was an article in Foster's that pretty well covered it, now you let the people in ORYA deal with their problem. We're not going to deal ourselves into that, into ORYA during that problem. There aren't going to be any changes before that's dealt with. Mr. Burton, last week, commented about, I think it was last week, I could be wrong, Madbury Road, they stopped at Edgewood Road. I was stopped, the backup from the bypass and the lights. I was stopped just starting up that hill before Mr. Burton's house. My second stop was at 108 Madbury Road, I was looking right at the number. Third stop was 118. Fourth stop was at Emerson Road, and the fifth stop was on, was in front of the boat that's on the trailer in the woods. That's why I wanted Northern Connector. But more importantly, when we had an actual civil engineer, Bob Levesque, he wanted to put in a right-hand turn lane for the last couple hundred feet. Thing the right-hand turn lane does for you, it allows the cars in line to close up before the car makes the right-hand turn, instead of the intersection having to process blank That should have come to someone's attention if any of you knew anything about traffic, and it should have been expressed here. The other thing I'd like to say is, when I was concerned about the speed bump, Mr. Burton said that, while there are kids across the street, we don't want any of them hit. Well, the only way to keep them from getting hit is keep them out of the traffic. So not long ago, it was still snowing on the ground, three boys ran across the road, two in front of a car, one behind a car, while the cars were moving, because they wanted to throw snowballs at the kids on the other side of the street. Also, I was going out there one time, before I got to Mr. Burton's house, the traffic stopped, and I was in a position where I could see. A woman came out into the road, put her hand up, stopped the traffic, and allowed another woman or a boy on a bicycle to cross the road. You've got some work to do out there, and I don't think that speed bumps are going to make it safer or help you.
Sorry, Bill, that's five minutes. Anyone else to speak at public comment this evening?
Good evening, I'm Jessie Mccone, I'm at 35 Dover Road. I wanted to make just a couple of brief comments regarding the fact that there's going to be an informational meeting taking place here at Town Hall tomorrow night, Tuesday, April 17th, at 6:00 PM. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation has announced their plans to permanently draw down Beards Creek in Durham. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation may even seek to dismantle the dam and revert the pond to a tidal estuary. The DOT representatives are convening the meeting because they seek public input prior to their planned drawdown date of May 7th, which is only three weeks away. All Durham residents are invited to attend tomorrow night's informational meeting and learn about the consequences of drawing down Beards Creek. It is a complex issue affecting wildlife, flood control from upstream and downstream, a sewer pipe that will be exposed and subject to erosion if the pond is drawn down, and aesthetics, including sight and possibly smell. Beards Creek can be seen on the right-hand side of the road when driving into Durham from Dover. It is a scenic water view just after and adjacent to the large yellow Pines Guest House, and it is a lovely gateway element seen when entering Durham. Butters to Beards Creek have many questions about this proposal. I personally plan to argue against any drawdown that is permanent. I could support a temporary drawdown for the purpose of addressing needed repairs to the dam and for inspection of the sewer pipe. This major issue has come up with little advance notice, but I hope residents will appreciate this place of nature and be moved to attend the meeting tomorrow night, here at 6:00 PM, and to learn more. I had sent the councilors a message, a letter, to the effect of what I just shared publicly here, and in it, I had made a mistake which I'd like to correct. I don't think it's huge, but I have a file that says Beards Creek at home, and in going through it, I found a letter from 1993, the year that there was a drawdown of the pond in winter. And in my email, I had said that Mike Lynch had convinced the DOT to put the stop logs back in pronto. Well, it turns out, it was Skip Grady at the time. I spoke with Mike, he said he was probably working here at Public Works at the time, but, so, just to, you know, mention that. I may copy this and have copies of it to share at tomorrow night's meeting, but thank you for listening and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
John Carroll, 54 Canny Road. Later this evening, the council will receive a presentation from Michelle Sanborn of the New Hampshire Community Rights Network. This is thanks to the good work of Representative and Councilor Burton. I'm proud of the fact that two of my former UNH graduate students, Stuart Liederman of Center of Barnstead, and Representative Ellen Reed of Newmarket, are involved in this very important effort. And I'm glad that Betsy Burton sent her husband Wayne to democracy school. That's now paying off for all of us. Thank you, Wayne. How appropriate this is for Durham, a cradle of liberty among New Hampshire towns, from General Sullivan and Powder Major, among others, against the Crown in the 18th century, to four courageous 20th-century women, named Brown, Bennett, Sandberg, and Dudley, among others, who cast a blow for liberty against the power of big oil in the 20th century. Durham has used its power to protect itself from those outside who would take our liberty and do harm to our community and our environment. Today, we face a very real threat from Citizens United, namely, from corporations with the rights of citizenship, as if they were somehow human beings, corporate entities that can do us harm if we don't take action to protect ourselves. Using their newfound power, the rights of citizenship, as granted to them by a few Supreme Court justices, and many related actions, such harmful external forces can roll over us. The local municipal rights movement, historically referred to as local control, needs to be enabled to protect us from those who would impose on us against our will, pipelines and power lines, and even a prohibition against seed saving, a key to feeding ourselves locally. Our community rights are under assault, and we need to join our fellow communities to protect our local rights and thus determine our own future. This council, the planning board, and all the commissions, committees, and boards of town government in our town must be enabled to do their job and protect our town, our community, and not stand helpless when confronted by outside power. For that reason, I urge this council and all viewers this evening to consider carefully the message coming to us later this evening from Ms. Sanborn and the New Hampshire Community Rights Network, which she represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak this evening? Okay. We have Counselor and Town Administrator Roundtable, and we will start with Counselor Tobias.
Um, I, I'm going to let Carden do the planning board, since he probably has all prepared for that, but I just want to give one heads up. UNH is having their PUP 5K run on Sunday, April 29th, and I'd just like to let the community know about it. We've shared it on the Celebrate Durham Facebook page, and they have it shared on the UNH MUB page, and it's, that is a run with dogs, with your dogs, or you don't have to have a dog to run, but it's go through college woods. It runs, as I said, on April 29th, 9:30 AM to 1:00 PM, and it is a charitable event that is supported by the UNH Animal Welfare Association, and all proceeds go to the New Hampshire SPCA. And you can get some more information, you can either go to the Celebrate Durham Facebook page, or you could go to the UNH MUB website and just go for tickets, and you get all the information there. But I think it would be a nice cause. I know a lot of, we shared on Celebrate Durham, and a lot of, we had a lot of response from some of our local citizens, so I think it would be a nice way to show your support for that. Thank you. Mr. Burton?
Nothing to report from the HTC specifically, except that we are in need of three seats on the HTC, and if anyone in the public is interested in joining that August committee, it would be very nice.
Thank you.
I had my first meeting of integrated waste, and the, I'll start with the bad news. The bad, and I think Todd had it in Friday updates, which is that we've hit, what is the second time I've had to use this term, the double whammy, and that is the money that we're getting from recycling, we used to actually make money from it, and that's kind of drying up. And if that's not bad enough, the actual tonnage of trash that we've had has also gone up, so it's causing us, it's making it stressful in terms of budgetarily where we are, so that's a consideration. And then, also, you're probably going to talk about this, there was talk about potentially privatizing either the trash service, potentially the plowing service, whatever it would be. You know, it's kind of an interesting thing, when I was at the meeting, I was saying we faced that a couple of years ago with the school bus service, and then, you know, my advice really was, if the cost is close, it's really nice to have the flexibility of having things in-house. So it was an interesting meeting. The next one is the first Wednesday of May. The second thing is, is that I long ago talked about having this letter that we're going to do with the freshmen, we've set up a meeting on May 2nd, we're talking with UNH. But as I've been working, and Todd actually also pointed to me, and I finally found it, the UNH Community Commuter Guide, which is a 48-page PDF, and I was like, we can probably do a better job with this and make it more usable. So I've been cutting it up and putting it onto a website into different sections, but I think the time really has come for Sally and I, and I don't know if we want to do it with the Student Behavior Group, to actually come under the umbrella of your working group. And the reason I say that is, the two webpages I've worked on, one is Off-Campus Housing, which has a tremendous town element in terms of the, you know, fire, as well as potentially noise and trash element of it. And the second one, even more so, Sally and I met with David Homestock and the chief, and I'm doing one on police laws, and it's, I mean, I, it's, we talked with them, and a lot of it, really, the focus is on alcohol, but it's, in there is open container, internal possession of alcohol, disorderly conduct, party, I mean, it's all things that are coming directly under the town's purview, and I would just feel a lot more comfortable, because we're getting feedback anyway from all the departments, like Audrey and that, but it'd be so much more helpful if we just resided under a committee and you guys can look it over. I think, I think the feedback would be just really helpful.
Now, what committee would that be, again?
Well, we pulled together the working group to look at student activities off-campus, things such as the Cinco de Mayo disturbances from the past, that group.
I'm actually on that committee.
Right, and it just, I had asked a few councils to join me and some members of the community and the university, so what I'd have to do is take a look at numbers, because we couldn't have more than four counselors there, and we already have, I think, we have Kitty, Kenny, Jim, Wayne, so we have four already. So we'd sort of have to juggle who's there. I think, I think we may be getting to the point in time where the focus of that effort could change to be more what you're talking about, sort of proactive communication with the student body and how we engage them in a really useful cooperative way. And I think once we move through May 5th, that'll really be the focus going into the summer.
I'm open, I just really feel better, I just want advice.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you. Council Broder?
So just to that point, I think it is clear that Sally and I, you're working on very parallel, very complementary tracks, and I definitely see bringing that all together would be very, very valuable. Land Stewardship Committee held their meeting on April 17th, a week late because of a storm. Discussion items, there'll be two resolutions that are part of our unanimous consent agenda that came out of that, and people have questions for that, I'd be happy to answer them. There are many workdays that are scheduled that will be including community members and various contributions from UNH with both fraternities, the UNH Ski Team being involved and whatnot. So we'll keep a listing on Friday updates with those offerings. We're helping with trail work, signage work, and the like. Doe Farm was discussed, and part of the discussion was, we're, we've been working to try to make it very available for all community members to kind of put down the name of a property, look at what the attributes of that property are, kind of a map of the property, and certainly a trail map of the property. And through the Celebrate Durham website, Doe Farm came online, and so I refer people to look at that, but it explains that property and gives people the way to access it and talks about the trails. We talked a little bit more about Doe Farm, and one concern that's been raised, and I think we'll need to deal with it, and it might come from either funding from the council or from the Conservation Commission, is as the trail network is more established in that property, as we bring more people, that property has the railroad line, both the freight and the Amtrak, that really goes right by, and where that goes by is very close to where people access the Doe Farm, and we're just thinking, in a safety issue, a preventative issue, to try to do some sort of aesthetic fencing to make sure that we don't wind up with an accident there. We talked about the two different fog properties, and one of them had recently been sold, and there were easement obligations with that property, and the person who bought that is interested in doing a cut flower farm, and will be planting flowers and selling them, and kind of the mechanics of that and where they sell them from are being worked out, but picture, as you're going down Mill Road, you come to that corner, and you're seeing a field of flowers that are going to be cut, I think that really meets the criteria. Michael Lynch wasn't there, and that was because he was down at Wagon Hill Farm, but he wanted us to present a technique to deal with shoreline erosion, is certainly to try to establish plants that anchor the soil, the sand and whatnot, and cord grass is what's usually planted, and the thought of planting cord grass stem by stem is very daunting. And a company Mike was meeting with, and maybe Mike would jump in, has, is developing or has developed a plan so that the cord grass comes in almost something like you would get a piece of sod, so it can lay patches down and cover all of those areas. So I think that's it.
Council Burton?
The Energy Committee developed a draft Solar Energy Systems Ordinance, and this came out of the controversy about the freestanding system that was installed on Becker's Falls Road, and I thought, it shows how the process can work in this town. I think the experts on the Energy Committee spent a considerable amount of time drafting it, it then went to the planning board, and they worked it over and did a really nice job on it. And so we, in the future, when that finally comes out, we'll have guidances about how those systems can be installed, and I think the Energy Committee did a really good job. Tonight, by accident, is also Community, Oyster River Community Reads in the high school, and it's unfortunate, all this comes together. The, what's interesting about this, though, they had, one of the programs they had was with the Humanities Council, it was the History of the Abenakis in New Hampshire from Martin Maine, and I didn't realize that the governance system we now have, that Jefferson designed, is in part based on the Abenaki, how the Abenakis governed themselves in dispersed villages around New England states, and it was a way to disperse power, and, but also, it was a matricial culture, where the men only owned what they wore, and the women owned everything else, and ran the show, as they do here, of course, Madame Cher. But I think, I think it was really enlightening, and I would, I have read the book, Waking Up White, it's an amazing book, even if you thought you knew everything there was to know about diversity, it's a very powerful book, and I suggest it to everyone, even though you won't get to meet the author tonight, who's speaking at Oyster River High School. I'd also like to point out that Representative Ellen Reed is actually here, who was mentioned previously. By sheer dint of coincidence, she happens to be John Carroll's former graduate student. Ellen and I, and Steve from Plymouth, were, led the effort on the constitutional amendment that went before the New Hampshire House of Representatives, and I'd like to acknowledge Ellen's presence here tonight, and that's my announcements.
Thank you. Councilperson Nelson?
So I went to the first meeting of the Agriculture Committee. You know, admittedly, I have not been involved with that committee in the past, and I just appreciated the, kind of the warm welcome, and it was, it was nice. But touch on just a couple things from that meeting. One, just as an update, you know, we've talked about the market at the MUB this year, and I forget the student's name, but a student came in and gave a briefing of how it had gone this year, and I was really impressed with the amount of data that they collected on, you know, who goes, when they go.
This is the farmer's market at the MUB, right?
Yeah, yeah, the MUB, they call it MUB Market. So next year, they have a very aggressive plans. They tentatively have booked seven markets for next year, they're moving it to the larger Granite State Room, and I think as we get into next year, for them, in part, to be successful, it will probably take, giving them as much visibility as possible in the Friday updates and the roundtable and things like that. We also worked on the zoning amendments. The zoning amendments, I haven't had a chance to really get into, but one of the things that I've saw in the work that they're doing is to take the best management practices and think what districts would really preclude the activity. and think what districts would really preclude the activity based on the, the, the best management practices. So it's, it seems to be going through a process of more refinement, which I ultimately think will make it more workable. I'm going to suggest, though, that at some point in the future, before this is all brought together, I think it would be good to have the representatives from the Agriculture Committee come to the council and really present an overview of exactly what they're trying to do, how they're going to do it. Because if there's any type of disconnect, I don't know that there is, I'd rather solve it earlier rather than later after a lot of work is done to put it in the form that either the town council or the planning board requires. Also, discussions about Durham Farm Day, which is in August, and discussions about some new activities, particularly for children, and also a discussion on the possibility of a community dinner, but I don't have an update after that meeting on those discussions. And then Todd, I may be a little out of sync with this, so you, you can clarify it, but in the email chains that I'd been reading, I, I'd come to the conclusion that their farmer's market would be returning to the Jacksons Landing area. With your email today, I saw, I wasn't so sure whether that was the final decision or not, but I, I think there's a, this decision has either been made or a high likelihood that they'll return to where they were last year, but.
I, I concur, I think we're still waiting for a final, final word, but at this point, they're leaning toward returning to Jacksons Landing. The other option the town made available was the western part of the existing Town Hall lot.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll see what they come back with.
And then just, um, an acknowledgement to Councilor Tobias, who long before this spent so much time looking at different alternatives, you know, out of the box with UNH, and so, so just, you know, very, very appreciative, because you put a lot of time into that, so.
It's my pleasure.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Welsh?
Yes, the planning board met on last Wednesday, the 11th, and I'd say there were probably three pertinent items. One is just really kind of a private matter, driveway at 100 Mill Road. They want to put the driveway closer to the wetlands than it would be allowed, so there's a site walk next Wednesday if anyone's interested. Secondly, I would, I would term them cleanup items on a couple of issues in the Conservation Overlay District, the Shoreland Protection District, and signs for multi-tenant developments. Nothing major, just making the zoning a little easier to understand, a little less cumbersome. Third one, which was significant, and I think Councilor Burton already mentioned it, is a proposed amendment for solar energy systems. And the Energy Committee really did a great job looking at other places, what they've done, what the issues are, and they came up with a very good plan. We had mended it somewhat, basically making some changes restricting the height of the, of the systems and the size of the systems. But really leaving them, you know, looking at current day systems, leaving them at, I think, a very, um, you know, being able to power whatever you need to power. For instance, they had a limit of one megawatt, which is almost double what we have out in Lee, and we took that down to half a megawatt. There was no limit on height, and we put the limit as height of 10 feet above a roof. There was no limit on an array that was leaning against a house, so we said it can only go out 10 feet from the house, so you don't, can't cover your yard. Those were three changes we made, I think the three significant changes, and there will be a public meeting next week for, at the planning board for anyone who's interested in speaking to that. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Coro?
I attended my first Conservation Commission meeting as a counselor.
I'm sorry. One other thing, I leave something out. There's also, we removed the agricultural restriction. There was something that said you couldn't put these systems on prime agricultural lands, and we thought that would be another thing that would hinder a farmer's ability to, to make a living. So we thought, why restrict the farmers and let everyone else do whatever they wanted? So we took that one out.
Thank you.
I forget where I was. So I attended, I attended my first Conservation Commission meeting last Thursday. As a counselor, I previously served on the Conservation Commission as a, as the Planning Board representative for a year and a half. And the composition of the commission has changed a bit, and as a result, Administrator Selig chaired the meeting. And that was initially to, to select a new chair and a vice chair. Because of the, the way the, the commission is comprised now, there, there weren't any volunteers because of their, you know, their jobs and other commitments, there wasn't anyone to step up to the commission chair position, and that will be done in future meetings. I'm not sure why, but I, I stepped up to be the vice chair, so I'll be chairing the meeting next month on May 10th in Administrator Selig's absence, but I'm happy to do so. Pretty routine meeting, some important things were discussed, important but routine, to driveway, conditional use for driveway and conditional use for driveway permit, recommendations to the planning board. There were actually four dock replacement and new dock structures. And again, those are relatively routine. There's so much regulation with DES and Harbor Master, et cetera, so they're, they're routine, they just require a, a recommendation from the Conservation Commission. We had a land stewardship subcommittee update from Ellen Snyder, and thank you, Councilor Rotner, for bringing us up to speed on that, so I won't, I won't go into those. We will be seeing two of those things, which are on the unanimous, unanimous consent agenda this evening. Towards the end, we, we discussed the Dam Bureau, the letter of deficiency on the Mill Pond Dam. I mean, we will probably be talking about that in future meetings. Counselor Selig did read the letter that was submitted by the town engineer, April Talon, to the Dam Bureau, and we had a, a bit of discussion on that. We also discussed the Beards Creek Lowering, and as a resident previously said, there will be a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM here. And then the drawdown is tentatively scheduled for May 7th. And just to dovetail off something that Councilor Burton had mentioned, the culminating event on the Oyster River Community Read program, I believe is May 3rd, it's a community forum essentially discussing a way ahead and kind of wrapping up the entire program, which started in January 26th. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention, at the end of our Energy Committee meeting, Charlie Forshee announced he was resigning from the committee, resigning as chair of the Energy Committee. We found out he's only going to San Francisco, that's no excuse. There are airplanes, of course, but we, we're gonna, I just want to pay homage to Charlie and the incredible amount of work he's done in this town, especially on that committee. He really has done some great work, and I want to thank him publicly for his service. We've got some terrific people on that committee, including Barbara Gill from the planning board, that's worked really well. So we'll pick, I guess we'd have to pick another chair, is that how it works? And we'll keep going, but we'll miss Charlie a lot. He's, he's, he was really the prime mover behind the solar array we now have in Lee, for example, and many other accomplishments. But we wish him well, his family's going to stay here, he's going to San Francisco temporarily, I, I take it, so. But I want to thank him publicly for his tremendous service to the town.
Thank you very much. Very appropriate.
Just a few brief updates. There was just brief mention of the fact that the Public Works Department had gone out to see whether our in-house trash, trash collection would continue to be more competitive than going outsourced. And it appears that it continues to be this cycle by about $180,000. So that's a, a positive development in terms of the efficiency of the Public Works operation.
That's larger than last time.
It is larger, it is. And I'm thinking we may have a presentation at the council just to talk about it, because I think it's interesting, and also some of these other trends in terms of the cost of collection, because right now, we're paying around, I think, $60 a ton for the mixed recyclables, and many of the other communities are paying $100 a ton of more. And at that level, the price of disposing recyclables equals the price of disposing of just typical municipal solid waste that's put in a landfill. And we've been informed that it's likely in the next few months that our rate will be increased to the $100 level. So it'll create, I think, an interesting conversation for us to talk through what that means and what options are. So we'll plan on that in the future. We also had a really interesting presentation for our leadership team, which is the department heads of the town, from Kyle Pimental from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, Cameron Wake, who's a UNH professor, dealing with climate change and sea level rise, and also a specialist from the UNH Sea Grant Cooperative Extension Program. And they talked with us about the anticipated impacts of sea level rise in Durham, which we'd already studied to a certain degree in our hazard mitigation planning. But one element that Professor John Carroll had actually mentioned in an email was the impact sea level rise in the future may and will likely have on the level of groundwater, and what that means for properties in low-lying areas where groundwater may rise and impact basements and other types of things. And so we're hopeful that we can put together a work plan with this grant program, it's funded under a grant program, to do some additional analysis on Durham to see how that sea level rise might impact groundwater in the future. And beyond that, I would simply refer people to the weekly Friday updates, which has a host of information, and.
Awesome.
Do you think it appropriate to just say the meeting with the Madbury Select People?
Oh, sure, that's a great idea, yeah. So, last Monday, Counselor Rotner and Chair Marple and I attended a meeting of the Lee Board of Select People.
No, Madbury.
Thank you, Madbury Board of Select People. And we had a very nice conversation around whether there are areas for possible cooperation and collaboration between the two towns. There were a number of topics just suggested for general talking purposes. One was library, are there areas we can do more together with our libraries? A second was recreation, Parks and Recreation. And the Select People pointed out that some of our Parks and Recreation programs are actually done on trails in Madbury, and so in that way, we're taking advantage of the resources we each have. We also talked about fire service and the fact that our acting fire chief, soon-to-be fire chief, David Emanuel, has a lot of interest in working closely with Lee and Madbury and Newmarket and fine-tuning our response plans, our pre-planning, so that when there is a call and we have to provide mutual aid to one another, everyone is more prepared to provide the kind of support that we all need. So that was very positive. The Select People in Madbury also raised the question of whether we might look at solid waste collection and transfer station services. Right now, if I, if I understood the Select People correctly, the town of Madbury subsidizes the tipping fee for the disposal of solid waste for Madbury residents, but Madbury residents pay the
Collection.
Collection part of that, and they independently hire somebody to pick up their trash. And then in addition, and I think the same is probably true with recycling, and then the transfer station in Madbury is only open for part of the year, not all year. And so the question was, would there be an opportunity to work together, particularly where Durham is sort of actively looking at our collection routes and pricing and all of that. So we thought we had good food for thought, and I think the first step will be the Durham and Madbury Parks and Recreation Committees will get together and talk about how, you know, what each other are doing and how they might collaborate more. For library services, Madbury has just approved a new library in Madbury, and they're gearing up for that. So it's a nice opportunity for Madbury residents, and I think perhaps the, the key there is to see how we can maximize residents from each of the communities utilizing the other's library and what the fee structure might be, things such as that. Was there, was there more?
Well, just that their meeting was really low-key and there was no television.
No television? That's right. Few people there. We did, we did briefly discuss ORYA, and the Madbury Select People did raise the idea of having a designated representative from each municipality that contributes to ORYA, both in terms of cash contribution, which each community provides, field space, in Durham's case, office space that we provide free of charge, and having a, the governing body of each entity appoint somebody who would be the official representative from each town to just ensure that there's true accountability and reporting back and forth between the governing bodies and that organization. And so I think that's something, certainly we've talked about here in Durham, and in May, I'm planning to visit with the Board of Select People in Lee, and we'll let Councilors Rotner and Marple know the date when that will take place, and hopefully you can come too.
Thank you. And you're, you're all set with your stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to unanimous consent, and I'm going to ask if anybody wanted to pull anything from that before I start reading. C?
C.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
You, C?
C.
C.
Item A, shall the town council schedule a public hearing for Monday, May 7th, 2018, on a resolution naming the swap shop building at the Durham Transfer Station and Recycling Center after resident and swap shop volunteer Linda Hollister? Item B, shall the town council, upon recommendation of the administrator, schedule a public hearing for Monday, May 7th, 2018, on a resolution to accept and expend grant funding from the state of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the amount of $75,000 to be used for the Little Hale Pond Dam and Stream Restoration Project? Item D, shall the town council, upon recommendation of the administrator, authorize the withdrawal and expenditure of $2,675 from the Durham Conservation Land Use Trust for a Phase 1B archaeological study at the Thompson Forest by Metmanadnock Archaeological Consulting? And item E, shall the town council, upon recommendation of the administrator, authorize the withdrawal and expenditure of $2,500 from the Durham Conservation Land Use Trust to continue invasive plant control at Doe Farm? I move those four items. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Okay, back to item C, Councilor Bennett.
Uh, yes, I, I noticed that the vehicle that is being proposed is about $5,400 more than the original was requested. Looking at the, the proposed vehicle, I can really see why, why that is, it certainly has a lot of advantages, and I don't really have an issue with that. I, I do have a question about the usage of the vehicle.
Before we continue, but just say that this is a van for use by the Parks and Recreation Department? A pass, a passenger van, is it 16 or 17 passengers? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So there are a lot of advantages to the, to the proposed van, the Dodge van over the Ford, and, I mean, the, the seats are wider, there are more seats, the step in height is better, mileage is better, et cetera, et cetera. The issue that, that I have relates to the usage of the van. And in the agenda description, the van will be used for youth, teen, adult field trips, after-school programs, special events, summer day camp, and vacation week slash teacher workshop days. The question I have is The question I have is, can Rec, Rachel, or Kenny, or Alan, give me a breakdown as to the approximate use for youth and teens versus adults and summer vacation versus the rest of the year? I see in here that school program, after-school programs and teacher workshop days, there could be some cost sharing with the school department on that. The other issue that I have is the adult field trips. If we're going to go that route, we really should have a van that has handicap access. This is an expensive van. It looks like it's going to be used townwide. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I think that I would be more comfortable voting yes for this if I knew the answer to the questions I'm bringing up.
Rachel, you want to come up?
Have to excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold, so I'll try to get through this without offing too much.
So first, this is Rachel Gazowski, Durham's Parks and Recreation Director.
So some of the questions that you brought up, some of the programming would be new because of the van, so we don't necessarily have that information or data to provide, you know, the backup for that at the moment. So like teacher workshop days, vacation week programming, those would all be new opportunities to use the van. The reason why I put the camps in there specifically with the dollar amount, we filled up last year, you know, with the camps, and so that's kind of like the one program that we have to provide the information with. So moving forward, a lot of the adult programming, teacher workshop days, vacation weeks would all be new.
What about the adult portion of the?
The adult portion, for sure. I mean, we plan to offer a series of trips throughout the course of the year. We did offer about nine trips last year throughout the summer. Probably not the best time to put those out.
And just at a, what kind of a trip, would that have been like, where did you do?
Sure, we had anything from, let's see, what do we have off the top of my head here? We had a trip to the Fells. We had a trip up to Portland to the Maine Mead Factory, a lighthouse and lunch tour. Oh, let's see, what else do we have?
That's okay. As far, okay, so getting back to the handicap issue.
So the option with that would be to move to more of a, like a minibus type option. The issue is that, is that we're going to lose, you know, seating.
Right. Seating and the other concern we had was the ability to park it easily, particularly downtown, where they're much more challenging to maneuver. So we looked at a variety of different options, including just a standard van, which would be less, and we thought for, for the purpose of safety, increasing the cargo capacity of the van and making it more comfortable so that not only kids, but adults would be comfortable traveling. This van has larger seats, so it just accommodates an adult frame more. It made more sense.
I mean, this style van can have handicap seating in it, but we really would lose, I mean, almost all, a great deal of seating on the, on the van, for sure.
Yeah, because it would be loaded from the rear with a lift.
Right. And this company does, they specifically, this is what they do, they outfit vans and buses to meet those needs.
Well, I'm just wondering if we looked along, with the long view here, this is an expensive vehicle. And the other thing is the front-wheel drive. If it's only going to be used in the summer, that's probably $3,000, $4,000 per front-wheel drive versus most vans that have rear-wheel drive. So if it's, it's going to be mostly a summer-use van, you don't really need front-wheel drive.
I anticipate us using it year-round.
Yeah.
Most definitely.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'd just like to point out that if, if there are trips done by Parks and Rec, which is focused on handicapped or handicapped accessible because of what the nature is, Parks and Rec can always go and make arrangements to have a vehicle that can provide those services. And from, from my standpoint, a lot of work has been done to really think through this, maximize the investment that we're making. And I just, I, I just am not interested in micromanaging a decision like this. I think they've done a great job looking at the requirements and pricing a van slightly more expensive, but with a plan for how that's going to be paid for. So I'd encourage that we just go ahead and vote on this.
Have you, have you had any, before we do that, have you had situations where even children who are handicapped needed to ride somewhere? Has that, I know it'll come up because there are handicapped people everywhere, but has that been an issue up until now?
So, I mean, our use with the van to date has been with our summer program, and a lot of the partnering that is done with the REACH program, you know, the school also offers a pretty extensive summer program for kids with either learning disabilities or physical disabilities. And in that case, they provide all the transportation for the programming.
Okay.
So that's not to say that, that isn't a question that we would get. It just hasn't come up at this time.
Okay.
Yeah. Really, Rachel worked hard to identify the needs of the department and then come up with a solution to meet those needs.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Rachel, who drives the van?
At the moment, it would be myself.
Is there, is there any special license or anything needed for this?
No, with the amount of seats, it's not required.
I just, ironically enough, I did go to the Durham Community Dinner thing before coming here. And that is a significant difference between the school side and the town side. The school, absolutely, you do have to have licensing. It's very specialized, and so it's, there's a lot more flexibility in terms of driving coming from this than there is on the school side.
Is that because of the size of the vehicle or because of?
It's just the state requirements.
Even the school, the minivans that you see the school district driving around, those drivers still need to have a CDL license
Yeah.
to drive those.
Yeah. The thing that brought to my attention was the school program. So it's unlikely you're going to be doing too many school programs because of the requirements, from what I understand, of the
Because we're not the school district, we were able to use this van
A lot more.
for any after-school program.
So this is not a school-designated program?
No.
So this should really say, okay, it does say after-school programs. Okay, so it's not related to the school whatsoever?
Like, for example, during the school vacations, the Parks and Recreation Department has received a lot of requests from residents who are looking for activities that are non-school activities for their kids because they have the kids home all week. So Parks and Recreation has tried to respond.
Well, I'm comfortable voting for it. I just, I'm still a little bit concerned about the adult issue and the lack of handicap access from the point
Can I make a motion?
of using it for that. But I still have a, I still plan on voting for it.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion.
Yep.
The Durham Town Council does hereby, upon recommendation of the administrator, award the bid and authorize the purchase of a new 2017 Dodge Promaster 3500 passenger van to Patsy's Bus Sales of Concord, New Hampshire in the amount of $48,895, and authorizes the administrator to sign associated documents with the expenditures to be paid from capital account, Capital Fund Account 07-1805-702-36000, and General Fund Operating Budget Account
Seconded? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you? Yes. Okay, now we get to the committee appointments. Thank you very much, Rachel. Okay, I'm wondering if it's easiest just to plunge into this unless people want to talk about anything in particular. I think a lot of these people have been on these committees before. So unless anybody has any, yeah?
I was a bit surprised that, for instance, I was looking at Planning Board in particular, why some candidates are recommended by the chair and some aren't. And there were, there were some other sort of mystifying, as we go through, there were some pieces of documentation were available and some weren't. And was that an oversight or?
Well, Jenny did forward on to the council some feedback we did receive. Some came in today regarding the zoning board. And I guess we have two from Sean Starkey that have to do with Tom Toy and Peter Wolf and their reappointment. So I've got
So those came in?
Those came in today. Others we just did not receive in every case. In terms of the, the person who is suggested for reappointment in the specific slots, Jenny and I actually went through and we plugged the people's names in. It didn't come from the chair people. And basically, if somebody was in a regular member slot, we kept them there. If somebody was in an alternate slot and was interested in moving up to a regular member, typically, we'd move that person in. And if we had new people coming onboard, we looked at who had been involved with other boards in the past and made a recommendation that way.
I'm interested because we had this discussion like four years ago, and we said we're not comfortable just bringing people onboard. We'd like to know a little bit about them, and we suggested the chair meet with them and provide us with the recommendation. And there's, I would say, several here who it's kind of incomplete in terms of the, the things we're looking for.
Yeah, we, we haven't always had success getting a response from the chair, and in some cases, there's not a chair. So for example, with Conservation Commission, there's not a chair right now, so we're sort of stuck.
Jim Lawson?
So I agree with Carden. There are, as I see it, six applications where either the applications are incomplete and are missing a, a committee or a chair recommendation or review. And then with one appointment to the Planning Board, you know, the chair has said they didn't meet the requirements of 2003-20, that resolution, but then provides no guidance in terms of whether the board thinks they should be reappointed. And I would suggest tabling those six people until the next meeting and ask the chairs to, to make a recommendation and confirm that they've met with them.
It's a, it's a little bit of a, a time factor. From the administrative part of this, Jenny Berry puts out their requests, and we try to get them in, and we then try to bring you the appointments before the end of this month. So it's, it's tricky when there's not always a response.
And it's, you know, it's primarily just, you know, new people that we don't have any history to. The six are not reappointments, with the exception of that one on the Planning Board. But, you know, if it's just another three weeks to, you know, get the chairs' concurrence and, you know, to complete the parts of applications that are missing, I, from my standpoint, I feel it's our due diligence. But I'm also, in those six cases, willing to just abstain from, from voting.
Do you want to?
All right. Can you tell me who the people are, please?
On my list for the HDC, it's Carolyn Singer. Zachary, I hope I get this right, because I transposed it.
Thank you.
For the Conservation Committee, Nathaniel Matern, Walter Rouse. And Planning Board, it's Bill McGowan and James Boobar.
Bill McGowan? He's been on the Planning Board for centuries.
Yes, but he's, he's a reappointment, and the chair sent us a message saying that he did not meet the requirements of Resolution 2003-20, and has not provided any guidance as to what the significance of that is. I mean, I know what it is, but is the chair saying he is recommending not reappointing? You know, it's not clear.
Well, I kind of question the likelihood that any of these people would be considered not capable of doing the job, quite frankly.
Kitty?
Yes?
Could I ask Jim what the, the issue is with Carolyn Singer and Zachary Fangman?
Well, Zachary's kind of new to the business, but, right, Carolyn Singer's been
Right.
There's, there's no review or recommendation from the chair or vice chair.
Yeah.
Carolyn Singer didn't provide any references. And in the case of Zachary, it's unclear if he's been to a meeting room with the chair.
We may have, and actually, I know we do have some of these applicants here tonight, so the council itself could question some of them as well.
Again, it's just me, I'm, I'll just abstain if we don't have that information.
I think on the, on the Conservation Commission, when Nathaniel Matern and Walter Rouse, I think they came in after, they were, applications after Rob had already stepped down, and there was yet to have any chair there. And I believe those two people came from recommendation from Michael Marneau, who is That's correct. who's been a longstanding member there. So on, I would, I would take Michael's, you know, recommendation, because he actually sought them out and suggested they, I believe, I may be wrong, but
And I'd also point out on the Conservation Committee that I think that they're applying for alternate positions, which, you know, is a position to get engaged in. So they're, they're the only two that are alternates, so.
Yeah, they're alternates.
I just, to echo what Counselor Tobias said, on, at the meeting on Thursday, Michael Marneau did endorse the two candidates for the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Or, and discussed it.
So the problem is, is you're, you're talking to a chair who doesn't really care about these rules that have been put in place. I'm sorry. So if you want to abstain, that's fine. I think we're just going to forge ahead because these people have arrived, they've come here this evening, and, yes, you can consider that, especially where we know some of these people, some of them have been on committees before. Walter Rouse has been in town for decades. I'm just not that concerned about that. So we're going to go ahead and vote. Okay? All right.
So then I want to move, and so we can have a discussion, because I am going to be concerned about appointments to the Planning Board.
Okay.
And I am going to be concerned about appointments to a quasi-judicial body like the HDC. I agree with Counselor Tobias about Nathaniel and Walter on the Conservation Commission. But if that's how we feel, then let's, let's change the charter, you know?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would, I would disagree with your position. You know, we're all, I think, comfortable with several people, but we set up a program, we said, look, these are the people who drive the future of the town. And at least meet with the chairman and give us something to go on. And it's kind of a minimal obligation for someone who's going to be on a committee that's going to drive the future of the town. So if we don't have it, and it's only three weeks or two weeks until we meet again, and there's nothing pressing in the, in the, in the commission or committee that they're on, and they can go and watch, why wouldn't we want to wait until the chairman comes back and says? I mean, it's kind of weird when a chairman recommends one person and not another. It's kind of weird when a chairman says someone didn't come and doesn't give a recommendation. Don't you think?
Let's, let's vote. Is this enough time on us?
I think that I
Hold on, hold on. Well, I, I think what, you're right, these are the people that drive the town because they're on critical boards, making important decisions. important decisions. At the same time, we struggle mightily to find people to fill the seats. So we want to have a process that's welcoming and somewhat efficient and not too burdensome for the applicants.
This isn't burdensome.
Now, the other part of it, I think, is that the chair people, the committees generally are uncomfortable making these kind of recommendations. I think they often don't want to do it. So it's hard for them. And I think that may be what you're seeing where there's not a clear recommendation with some of the applications.
Yep. So I understand, Todd, what you just said. I understand what Sally said. But my feeling is that something such as the planning board has the potential to very much shape the future of our town. We on the town council are elected by the community. There's a process. At prior town council meetings, we set up a process to have people appointed and have those appointments accepted. And I'm not at all saying there's a problem with any of these candidates. But I think the system is in place to say, there's three openings on the planning board, or four, and four people apply and therefore they just get approved. And maybe these people have an agenda that doesn't align with town council goals or... And so I think it's part of the system that protects our community. And yes, maybe it's a slight inconvenience, but I think it would be a much greater inconvenience to the town to have people on these very influential committees who maybe shouldn't be on those committees. And I think we need to look out for the citizens of all the town and not just these individual applicants. So I'm agreeing with Carden and Jim here on this.
What I would suggest is that we go through the list and deal with those individuals that you're comfortable with appointing. And if there are some where there's information missing, but if they're here this evening, at least let them introduce themselves. You could ask them questions, but we can still go through the process. But I'd hate to send people home who took the time out of the schedule to come tonight only to bring them back in another time. So I'd recommend we just go through systematically. And if there's more information we need, we just put a hold on that individual and we make sure we get the information and bring them back at the next meeting. That's what I'd suggest.
Kitty, one more thing. Peter Stanhope stepped down as chair. Andrea was there. And Zachary actually came. He's a student at UNH. So there is no letter, I agree.
But he attended a meeting.
He attended a meeting.
Okay.
Carolyn is certainly incredibly qualified. But again, there's a situation of leadership which is going to be, has already resolved really for the next meeting. So I'm surprised that Andrea, you know, didn't, as the co-chair, didn't write something. But, you know...
She probably didn't mind.
The committee heard from one of the candidates last week.
Can we just bring that up? Because when we're going to go through this list, I agree with Todd, then you can throw that in and it'll just help us to move through them.
Okay, let's start with Agricultural Commission. Jim, why don't you start?
The town council does hereby reappoint Lee Alexander and John Carroll to three-year regular member terms of the Durham Agricultural Commission with said terms to expire on April 30th, 2021.
Seconded? Okay, all those in favor?
And the town council does hereby reappoint Susan McDonald to a three-year alternate member term on the Durham Agricultural Commission with said term to expire on April 30th, 2021.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Okay. Okay, Alan, you want to go to the HDC? And the one thing that you said about Carolyn was she was not recommended, that she had not attended a meeting or that she had not been...
There's no, in the packet, there's no recommendation from...
No recommendation.
And also, the application did not include references.
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
Is that hard copy?
Yes.
Okay. Electronic did not. Could you have Jenny?
It says, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So it did?
It says, I have attended a meeting of the committee and I have met with the vice chair person of the committee.
Right. We have no recommendation after that meeting from the chair or vice chair.
Well, I don't think...
The chair just walked in. Andrea Bodo.
Hi, Andrea.
Andrea, perfect timing.
Do you recommend that Carolyn Singer be on the HDC?
Andrea Bodo, I'm vice chair of the HDC. Peter and I wrote a letter of recommendation for Zach Fangman and sent it in about six weeks ago. A special letter. I'm happy to give it to you verbally. And we do endorse Carolyn Singer. So I think somewhere along the line, the paperwork got misplaced.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I think that's it for, because Larry's already on there, right? Larry Brickner Wood is already on the...
Yes, and we have approved him for reappointment, too.
Thank you so much for coming.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead then, Alan.
Okay, so for the HDC, Larry Brickner Wood, reappointment is regular term, ending 4/21. Want to do all three?
Yeah, why don't you read the motions? Do you have the piece of paper there?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Motion, the town council does hereby reappoint Larry Brickner Wood to a three-year regular member term on the HDC Heritage Commission with said term to expire on April 30, 2021.
Seconded by? Thank you. All those in favor?
The town council does hereby appoint Carolyn Singer to a three-year regular term, member term on the Historic District Commission Heritage Commission with said terms to expire on April 30, 2021.
Seconded?
I have a question for Carolyn.
She's not here.
Yeah, her daughter ran in the Boston Marathon today and she went to watch, so she's not here.
You don't want to vote?
My question had to do, Carolyn was very upset about the barn. And so my question was, what did she think we should have done and how would she have handled it?
About the, I'm sorry, about the what?
The barn.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I also am not going to vote for this nomination. I had the same question. I did not have an opportunity to check references. It was not in the electronic packet. So I'll just voice my opinion by voting against her.
Okay.
Can we just withhold?
Can we wait on that one?
Bring her in at the next meeting?
Sure.
Ask her to come in.
I mean, it was pretty caustic communication related to the barn. I wasn't comfortable with it.
Okay, I have no problem withdrawing.
Okay, and the third one?
Third one is, the town council does hereby appoint Zachary Fangman to a three-year regular member term on the HDC Heritage Commission with said term to expire on April 30, 2020.
And seconded by? All those in favor?
Can we see if he's here this evening? He may be.
He is! Would you like to say hello?
Sure. Yes, good evening, everyone. Before we get started, just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for having me. I believe, as was pointed out, I did attend a meeting for the Historic District Commission just last week, I believe, met with Andrea and Michael. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to interact with Durham at this level. And I hope to be working with you all very soon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Zachary? And I do apologize for the confusion about whether there had been HDC communication about you.
Of course, yeah, that's all right.
It's nice to see some younger blood. No offense, Andrea. I thought that didn't come up quite as well as it did. But it's nice to see somebody, obviously, who is younger, getting involved in the town rather than us, you know, people who have been around and have learned to be conscientious of our town. It's nice to see younger people. You may be 45, for all I know, I don't think so. But it is nice to see younger people taking an interest in the community because they are the future and they will one day be sitting around these tables in these small store chambers with the gray hair. So it's welcome.
Can I just say, a couple of months ago, Zach came to me, he's going to be a junior at UNH, and he was doing a project. And will you tell them what the title of the project was?
Absolutely. For, I'm majoring in community and environmental planning at the university. And I, for the semester, I am doing a project focusing on historic preservation in Durham and how a community action plan can help ensure the preservation of Durham's historic resources.
And tell them what groups you're on at UNH, so you have some experience.
Yes, absolutely. So I'm serving on the UNH Planning Student Commission as well as various hall councils and things like that.
Lovely.
And we found him extremely, you know, plugged into historic resources, asked wonderful questions. I had to think about them. He has an advisor at UNH, and Peter spoke with him about using the resources of UNH should we need them or, you know, want to elaborate more. I think this is the ideal situation, to get a UNH student working with us. And this is a great pilot study for us. Anyway, welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, did you read the, did we already vote on that one, too?
No, you didn't vote yet. It was motioned and seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Human Rights Commission. The town council does hereby appoint Andrew Merton as a citizen representative to the Durham Human Rights Commission. I spoke with him. He's obviously very qualified to fill the position. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, the PES Airport Noise Compatibility Study Committee. The town council does hereby reappoint Lee Seidel to a three-year term as Durham's representative on the PES Airport Noise Compatibility Study Committee with said term to expire April 30, 2021. May I have a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Andrew, do you want to do? I guess we're going to wait on Nathaniel Matern?
Are they here?
Is Nathaniel here? I don't think Walter's here either. Want to go ahead and read the three, the first, is Mr. Kreitzer? Oh, he's moving for alternate. Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Just as the council representative to the Conservation Commission, I don't have a problem voting on those ones unless you want to hold off on...
Yeah, I do want to make the point, too, that there are appointments to alternate positions, which is, you know, the best way sometimes for new people to move on, so.
And recruited and endorsed by a sitting Conservation Commission member.
And as chair of the Conservation Commission this past week, we did talk about both of these individuals and the group was very comfortable with them and in fact is looking forward to their joining the commission in the hope that we can get one of them to perhaps serve as chair.
So we're going to do all five, then?
Well, it's up to four.
I would recommend, I'll start. The town council does hereby appoint Colleen First to an unexpired three-year regular member term on the Conservation Commission with said term to expire on April 30, 2019.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Okay.
The town council does hereby move alternate member Jacob Kreitzer to a three-year regular member term on the Conservation Commission with said term to expire on April 30, 2021.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
The town council does hereby move alternate member Michael Marno to an unexpired three-year regular member term on the Conservation Commission with said term to expire on April 30, 2020.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The town council does hereby appoint Nathaniel Matern to an unexpired three-year alternate member term on the Conservation Commission with said term to expire on April 30, 2020.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
The town council does hereby appoint Walter Rouse to a three-year alternate member term on the Conservation Commission with said term to expire on April 30, 2021.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Okay.
Was that, I didn't, was it unanimous?
Yeah, I think so.
Did everyone vote in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to read the Tiff District?
Sure. The motion would be, the town council does hereby reappoint Tom Elliott, Roger Hayden, and Sean O'Connell to three-year terms on the Downtown Tiff District Advisory Board with said terms to expire on April 30, 2021, and these are all reappointments.
Seconded? All those in favor? Okay. Okay, the Durham Public Library Board of Trustees. Who wants to read that one? Sally, you want to read it?
I'll read it. This is a new appointment. The new, the town council does hereby, upon recommendation of the Durham Library Board of Trustees, appoint Eric Waddell to one-year alternate member term on the Durham Public Library Board of Trustees with said term to expire on April 30, 2019.
I'll second it. All those in favor? I have a question. I thought that people voted in town for the library board.
They vote for the regular members, but we can have, I believe, up to two or three alternates.
And they're just appointed by us?
Those are appointed by the council. And the library trustees have the ability to recommend somebody. The council can take that recommendation or not, but the council is the appointing authority of the alternates.
Okay. Okay, Economic Development. Do you want to go ahead and read that one?
The town council does hereby reappoint Warren Daniel to a three-year regular member term with the Economic Development Committee with said term to expire on April 30, 2021. One alternate member vacancy is remaining, term ending 4/30/21.
Seconded? All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, the Oyster River Local Advisory Committee. The town council does hereby recommend to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Commissioner, the appointment of Stephen Burns as Durham representative on the Oyster River Local Advisory Committee for a three-year term to be established by the commissioner. Seconded? Sorry.
I think, wait a second.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Did you second it? Yeah, wait a second.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you for volunteering, Mr. Burns. Okay, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. The town council does hereby reappoint Michael Drucker and Casey Marno to three-year regular member terms on the Parks and Recreation Committee with said terms to expire on April 30, 2021.
Okay, seconded? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, the planning board. So we're going to leave Mr. McGowan off and...
Is Bill here?
No, he's not here. We have everything for Mr. Boobar and Mr. Lambert, I take it?
No, we don't have a recommendation for Mr. Boobar.
He attended the last meeting.
Right. The only thing we're missing really is a recommendation from the chair.
Oh, Paul.
So I sent Paul an email and said, where's the recommendation? I haven't heard back.
Do you want me to go out in the hall and call him?
Yeah, why don't we?
We don't have time for this.
I know he was traveling.
People think I have two hours.
I could ask Mr. Boobar, maybe he knows.
If you're here, I'm waiting.
Oh, Mr. Boobar, maybe, have you seen the recommendation from Paul or spoken with him about this?
I've spoken with him about this, but no, I wasn't aware that you had the recommendation.
He's supposed to write one, and we don't have it. So that's the only thing.
Is this what you're talking about? This thing here? Is that the recommendation?
No, that's done for people who've been... So can I go ahead and do the ones that we know?
Well, I'm...
Barbara Dill has one.
Okay, where is that?
Right here. Barbara Dill, always a very active member of the board.
That's an email from...
Those are we...
So that's for reappointment.
Yeah, which is weird, so he gives us one from...
Okay.
Michael Lambert has one. And Michael Lambert has one.
Okay.
So you can do Barbara Dill and Michael Lambert.
All right, yeah, just do Barbara Dill and...
So the town council does hereby reappoint Barbara Dill to a three-year regular member term on the planning board with said term to expire on April 30, 2021.
Seconded? Okay, all those in favor?
And the town council does hereby appoint Michael Lambert to a... And the town council does hereby appoint Michael Lambert to a three-year alternate member term on the planning board with said term to expire on April 30th, 2021.
Second it? All those in favor? Thank you.
Is Todd going to ask about Mr. McGowan as well as Mr. Bubar?
I assume so. All right, why don't we move on and we'll come back to those if Todd is able, or is that the, oh gosh, I'm moving all this crap around.
The town council does hereby appoint Tom Toy to a regular member term on the zoning board of adjustment with said term to expire, expire April 30th, 2021.
Second it?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I hope I don't like totally butcher this name.
Michael Warnock.
The town council does hereby appoint Micah...
Warnock.
Warnock to a regular member term of the zoning board of adjustment with said term to expire April 30th, 2021.
Second it?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
The town council does hereby reappoint Peter Wolf to a three-year alternate member term on the zoning board of adjustment with said term to expire April 30th, 2021.
Second it?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so we have lots of open seats, I guess. Integrated Waste has four, regular and one alternate.
If Mr. McGowan, not Mr. McGowan, but Mr. Bubar is here, maybe he could come up then.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, we need the Chair to say, Mr. Bubar is more than qualified to be on this committee. But we need to hear it from the boss, so. Sorry to keep you waiting on that, James.
You were sorry, I had a couple of things, so did you ask me to come up?
No, I was just saying that, no, no, I was just saying that you are more than qualified to be on the committee and we're just waiting to hear from Paul Rasmussen. Sorry for, sorry for the inconvenience.
So what's the issue with Bill McGowan?
This reminds me.
I'm good. He's on the committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can I, can I go remind Todd we need to hear about Bill McGowan as well?
Sure. Yeah, why don't we take a five-minute break?
He's a good contributing member. And because of the attendance factor, Paul wanted to just flag that and leave that up to the council. He didn't want to make a recommendation one way or the other.
Yes.
Having spent four years as Chair, Vice Chair of the Planning Board, I, at one point, have filled out a recommendation for Mr. McGowan previously. And I would echo what Administrator Selig said. He's always been a contributing member to the Planning Board. And as a principal of a very large high school and with school board meetings on Wednesday evenings, he sometimes does have a problem getting there to the meetings. But 9.9 times out of 10, he would probably inform Mr. Barant or myself that he couldn't make it. So it was, which is part of the rules and procedures that, you know, if you miss the meeting, understandable. If you don't tell someone you're missing it, that's, you know, shame on you. But that's all.
I just would say something. He's also on the HDC and he does, he comes, religiously, he often comes late. But it's due to his commitment and he's always been very forthcoming about that. And he's been a good active member on the HDC. So, I mean, I would just throw that in with a lot of outside commitments. It creates a problem sometimes. And I wonder whether the minute taker doesn't always, if you come late, whether maybe sometimes when you're not recorded is coming when you come late? I don't know whether that happens, but...
Usually always be, are recorded when you come late.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just philosophically wondering if you have to miss a lot of meetings, is it probably not a better idea for you to be an alternate than a regular member?
Yeah.
Just because it would take the pressure off you?
What is he? I'm not sure Bill feels a lot of pressure. He's been on for a really long time.
I'm just throwing it out there.
I guess from the perspective of helping the alternates get experience, the fact that a member's not there means they get to fill in.
Well, why do we have resolutions that say, these are your obligations? And if people don't meet the obligations, they, well, there's another set of rules that we haven't put in the resolution and those are the secret rules and, you know.
Could we table Bill and Paul?
Yeah, yeah. Let's ask him to come in.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, I do, too.
That's good.
Okay.
Not table, postpone.
Postpone.
And maybe go and take a look at that resolution. It's 15 years old. Maybe we need to change it and make it more realistic or...
The resolution does say without an excuse. So if you are calling like you're traveling for business, a lot of people travel for business. My husband travels for business and they let people know why they can be there or cannot be there. And I think that that says it there. So if you're saying, I need an excused, you know, I need an excuse not to go, that is what, I believe is what it says.
I concur.
I don't think the resolution has, I don't think all of the resolution deals with excused absences, but...
All right, can we ask him to come?
Yeah, let's ask. I will do that.
Okay, moving on. We have a presentation.
Can I? John Carroll was right. I arrived in Durham in the middle of the oil refinery crisis. I was a card-carrying member of SOS, Save Our Shores. Later, I got involved in how Lee could fight off Boston sand and gravel from destroying the town of Lee. They sponsored legislation removing the ability of towns to regulate gravel mining. And now we have the trench across Great Bay. But all along, I was watching the Community Rights Network. And I did go to democracy training, which is really a great program they offered. And it's a history of community rights in the country. The last two terms, I've sponsored a constitutional amendment to put this on the ballot. The last time was more, we got more attention because I did it with the people who were fighting the pipeline project up north. And with that, I'd like to introduce Michelle Sandborn, who called me at 4:00 this afternoon in the middle of an ice storm. She drove two hours to get here from Alexandria, New Hampshire tonight. I hope you can get home okay. We have an extra room at my house if you need a place to stay. And to make a presentation, what is a rather remarkable organization, 11 towns in New Hampshire have now adopted what she calls rights-based ordinances. And with that, I'm very pleased to introduce Michelle Sandborn of the New Hampshire Community Rights Network.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Matt and Chair and Councilors, for making time during your agenda for this presentation. So I do have some informational packets for each of the councilors. And I also brought materials for the public, if any of the public is interested in that after the meeting. And so I know that this is going late and I don't want to take up more time than is absolutely necessary. So as Counselor Burton said, my name is Michelle Sandborn. I work with the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund and I am volunteer president with the New Hampshire Community Rights Network. Those two organizations partner with each other, and so we'll talk about how that works. My involvement in this work started in my own community in Alexandria, and that has broadened out to assisting other communities to do the same thing that we did in my community. The work originally began in Barnstead, New Hampshire in 2006. The work that we did in my community was in 2014. And so I'm willing to expand on that with anyone who would like to engage in questions. But the short of it is that as a result of passing a rights-based ordinance in our community, we had four different industrial developers that were eyeing our region. It's extremely rural. And as a result of a number of communities coming together in solidarity to pass these rights-based ordinances, not one single one of those developers is now eyeing our region. And so they have withdrawn their interest. So as a community member, we feel that the rights-based ordinance achieved what we hoped that it would achieve, which would be to protect our community, to envision what we saw as important for our community, to be able to protect that and to move forward with that local democracy. So this is about a grassroots movement for local democracy and ecosystem rights. And we'll jump in and talk about who is NHCRN and SEDAF. So NHCRN is a grassroots nonprofit established in 2013 to educate communities and legislators on the need for a people's movement to amend the New Hampshire Bill of Rights, to recognize, secure, and protect local democracy and ecosystem rights. SEDAF was established in 1995, bit older, as a nonprofit public interest environmental law firm, offering low-cost legal services to protect communities from corporate harm. However, no matter how many permits SEDAF helped to block, communities continue to receive the harmful corporate activities they didn't want. Now, how does that work? Because we were operating to help them appeal some of the permits that were issued by environmental agencies. And the chief legal counsel and co-founder of the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund is Thomas Lindsay. And he had an experience where one of the corporate lawyers came up to him and said, I'd really like to thank you for all the work that you're doing. We really appreciate it. And he's thinking, but we defeated you. You didn't get the permit. Why are you thanking me? And so he questioned him and the result was, you're saving us a lot of money. You're pointing out the faults with the application. And so now all we have to do is go back and dot every i, cross every t, and we will resubmit our permit, our application. And that's what they were doing. And so what wound up happening is that the communities were getting the very thing that they didn't want, which was not the ideal that Thomas Lindsay had when establishing the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund. So that created a paradigm shift. And in response to that, SEDAF pioneered a local democracy movement because local knows best is no longer recognized. Under the influence of special interests, state legislatures are passing laws that ban local governments from passing any law that addresses a range of issues from the environment to discrimination to economic policies and beyond, essentially meaning that local communities are powerless to do anything that might help their local economy or protect people and natural ecosystems. State legislatures are going further than that in preventing local governments from passing laws by punishing local communities and lawmakers who pass policies they disagree with. We saw a couple of these bills in the legislature this year to penalize local elected officials if they pass any kind of local gun control, that there would be penalties involved in that. These restrictions and punishments making local government, are making local government irrelevant, which makes it easy to ignore and override the unique needs and values of our communities. This is actually information based on research by the Anselon List Grove Research and more information. They published this in the Nationwide Voter Perspectives on Local Control this year, January 8, 2018. But New Hampshire has a deeper colonial history of local control, right? I mean, especially here in Durham. Yes. But over the past 100 years, local control has been stripped away by four legal doctrines that define what we call the box of allowable activism. So your community, the municipality, is inside that box. And these four legal doctrines basically dictate what you can and cannot do when it comes to issues of concern for the community. And so we will talk about each one of those. But the end result of this box of allowable activism is that whatever the outcome of your activism is going to be predictable. And those four legal doctrines define what that outcome will be. So the four legal doctrines, number one being sealing preemption. And I clarify that because when state and federal legislatures prevent local governments from passing laws or striking down local laws that afford greater protections, it silences the voice of the people. We all understand that preemption is a necessary part of having set standards, having set protections. And when we look at that as a floor, it makes sense. We're going to set some minimal standards. But some communities need to be able to, in many circumstances, set protections that are greater than what the state or federal government may set. And they're not allowed to do that. So that's what we call sealing preemption, meaning they come up against that and they can't go above and beyond, even though it's for the best of the community. The second one, nature's property. According to law, nature is mere property without legal standing to protect itself. Essentially, if you own it, you can destroy it, even if it's harmful to the whole human and natural community. Corporate rights and privileges is the third one. And this is applied using preemption and enforced using court-recognized corporate rights of personhood. And I say court-recognized because nowhere are corporations found in the state constitution or the federal constitution. So this places profit over protection of inherent and inalienable rights of human beings and a healthy planet. The fourth one is the regulatory fallacy, as we call it, because environmental regulatory laws function to actually allow harm to occur, not prevent it in the first place. The best that it does is it slows down the rate of harm. So through the issuance of permits, harmful corporate activities are actually legalized while denying local authority to veto such actions. An example of this is that as a private property owner, there are things that you can and cannot do with your property. And there are laws that dictate that. And we all appreciate those laws for the most part, right? I don't want anybody dumping gasoline or toxins or anything on their property and affecting my water quality or our health and safety. But as a corporation, you can go and you can apply for a permit. And that permit actually legalizes what would otherwise be unlawful. So harmful corporate activities are protected, while local people and ecosystems are denied protections for health, safety, and well-being. And according to history and research, local does know best. Our country was designed to have three levels of government, local, state, and federal, in that order, not top-down but bottom-up. In New Hampshire, local government preceded state and federal government. So it is unfounded to say that the municipality is a creation of the state in New Hampshire, being a colonial state. To solve problems, local governments must be able to determine the laws and set standards that reflect unique views, values, and needs of their human and natural communities. But with special interests keeping politicians at the state and federal level trapped in gridlock, local government is the best way to make our voices heard and demand accountability. When higher governments stop communities from passing protective laws, they silence the voice of the people, rob local communities of their local democratic power, and hurt the community's health, safety, and economic well-being. This comes from that same research that I referenced earlier. So what can we do? We can do nothing, and that protects business as usual, the status quo. We can fight harmful corporate activities from inside the box of allowable activism, thereby validating the corporate claimed rights and privileges to exploit our communities. Or we can do something outside the box. And the box I'm referring to is that box of allowable activism. And that brings us to local democracy, a people's movement using rights-based ordinances. So what is a rights-based ordinance? Well, first of all, the current system of law overrides local decision-making, legalizes environmental and social harm, recognizes corporate claimed rights of personhood, overrides of people and ecosystems. But a rights-based ordinance is a binding local law passed by democratic community vote, makes environmental and social harm illegal, elevates rights of people and ecosystems over corporate claimed rights, and affirms the right of local self-government. So what is the right of local self-government? It's the inalienable right of individuals to enact local laws that protect the social and environmental, health, safety, and welfare of the human and natural communities on which they depend, meaning that it's empowering those affected by governing decisions with the authority to make them, especially in the face of corporate harm, to protect people, planet, and principle over profit, always expanding, not limiting, people's rights. So home rule versus the right of local self-government. The New Hampshire State Constitution says we are not a home-rule state. Supreme legislative authority lies with the state. Municipalities only have the state authority that the state allows. We call that Dillon's Rule. That would be another 20 minutes. But this comes from the New Hampshire Constitution, Part II, Article II, which talks about and defines our structure of government. In 1973, Durham residents mobilized against the proposed Onassis Oil Refinery by exercising their right to home rule. This actually came out in a Boston Globe article using this terminology, and the reference came from Wikipedia. In 1974, the state legislature granted home rule authority to make governing decisions about oil refineries. An oil refinery shall not be located in any town or city without a vote of approval from the voters. So here's that example where the state has empowered the municipality with an authority that is home rule. The myth with home rule is that it is still subject to preemption. So if and when special interests and/or the state no longer agrees with or likes that particular law, it very simply gets overturned. And so any protection that was afforded as a result of that state law is gone. Whereas the local democracy movement is people mobilizing against harmful corporate activities in their communities based on their inherent and inalienable right as the origin of government, the right to protect their property, and the right to change government when it no longer acts to protect them. This comes from the first part of the New Hampshire Constitution, which is our Bill of Rights, and specifically referenced Articles 1, 2, and 10. So a rights-based ordinance or an RBO takes nothing for granted except for the supremacy of inalienable rights over other laws and the necessity for the protection of those rights. So our rights are elevated and higher than what we call land use or state statutes. Local democracy movement in New Hampshire includes nearly a dozen communities across the state that have partnered with SEDAF to draft first-in-the-nation laws that protect rights to clean air and pure water, recognize rights of ecosystems, elevate rights of people and ecosystems over corporate rights, protect against social discriminations, recognize and secure fair elections, and also calls for constitutional change to protect local democracy. So the New Hampshire Community Rights Network proposes a state constitutional amendment. And what does that amendment do and what does it look like? Well, first of all, it recognizes, secures, and protects local democracy in every municipality. It also calls for recognizing that people, communities, and natural ecosystems have rights to health, safety, and welfare and the authority to prohibit corporate activities that violate those rights. And ensure that local rights-based laws can only be used to expand rights and protections for real persons, communities, and natural ecosystems. And any effort to restrict existing fundamental rights under the amendment would not be recognized. And on March 15th of this year, one-third of the New Hampshire House of Representatives voting that day supported elevating the right of New Hampshire people to use their local governing process to pass local rights-based laws protecting the health, safety, and welfare of individuals, their communities, and natural environments above corporate activities that harm them. So there is support for this at the state level. A growing local democracy movement includes building local, statewide, and national change. The New Hampshire Community Rights Network is one of five state networks that is working for constitutional change at the state level. And the National Community Rights Network is working for constitutional change to recognize the right of local self-government at the national level. Almost 200 local communities nationwide have partnered with SEDAF to draft these rights-based ordinances. Currently, New Hampshire, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Colorado, and Oregon, along with the National Community Rights Network, partner with SEDAF to advance local democracy at the state and federal levels. So that was a really brief run-through of what SEDAF is and what we do, as well as the New Hampshire Community Rights Network. As stated, we had nine sponsors, supporters for, and that was bipartisan support in the legislature this year. Counselor Wayne Burton was one of them, as well as Representative Ellen Reed and New Markets' other representative, Charlotte DiLorenzo. We also had a representative, a couple of them actually up my way, so Representative Steve Rand and Vincent Migliore. So it was a really good discussion, a lot of education, and it was really great to see a number of these state representatives take hold of it, take possession of it, personalize it, and move it forward. And what we've seen is that at the local level in particular, it's not a partisan issue. At the state level, when it came to voting, it did reveal a bit more of a partisan issue, but not in the sponsors, not in the support from the sponsors. So I'm very happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
In terms of the partisan nature of the issue, how did the votes fall? Which party supported what?
Yeah, so about 73% of supporters of that one-third were Democrats and about 2% were Republicans. And part of what happened with this is that the New Hampshire chapter of the NRA came out very strongly opposed to the amendment, even though the language was very clear that it could not be used to restrict or weaken any fundamental rights. They still used public means of intimidating and, I'll just say it, fear-mongering with the representatives to, I think, discourage their support for it.
Your focus, and rightfully so, is environmental with this. I'm curious about whether education falls into that purview in local control of education and whether that might be something that gets, let's say this catches fire, whether that can lead to something good or something bad.
So education regarding what that looks like and...
And local control.
Yeah.
Because different communities place, just as Durham is, let's say, placing emphasis on some environmental work that we're doing, we also place value in schools. Other communities don't place as much value in education or schools. Would local rule, local control, just play into that at all, do you think?
To make efforts to educate the community, the New Hampshire Community Rights Network just partnered with Oyster River High School in presenting this very similar message, you know, different, of course, presenting it to high schoolers. So there was outreach and education. And yeah, I mean, there's, what this does is very similar to what you experienced here, your roundtable discussions and the openness of the exchange. It's about having the conversation. It's about people envisioning what they do want for their community, having that open discussion publicly amongst community members, which is all part of the educational process. And so yes, there is that outreach. SEDAF provides organizational assistance, educational assistance, and that includes the New Hampshire Community Rights Network, as well as the potential for legal support should that be necessary if a rights-based ordinance is challenged.
So maybe I didn't phrase it right. One of your slides talks about the ceiling, right, and having a floor.
Okay.
Right, so would local control of education lead to some districts doing a lot less because their communities decided, we don't want to put money into education, and therefore they don't need to abide by state requirements or vis-à-vis federal requirements?
Thank you for clarifying that. That is not the intent of this work. The intent of this work is to address corporate harm.
Okay, but I know that, but that's...
I think I can answer your question. The state requirements with regard to education now exist. And this, these kinds of ordinances are not, are building on that already. I don't think there'd be any change. Many, because I'm sitting on education, I know this comes up once in a while. We tend to give in the legislature authority, for example, on how you test students now. You have flexibility. And that's how that works. But the state's authority to make sure there's a school system certainly would stay intact, that you can't get out of that.
Right. The intent is not to weaken the process and the structure.
It's really only come up...
Totally get the intent. I see the complete positive intent. But in our twisted world, does sometimes what happens not really have the outcome that you had hoped?
Right, and I look at that and say, and that question comes by in many, first of all, I've heard that asked regarding education, but it comes in many different forms. And we live in a world in which those things do get vetted out through the court system. So when there is a question about the legality of something, that does get vetted through the court system. You know, so the intent clearly is not there to weaken those kinds of standards by any means. You have individuals that attempt to do that now, even without a rights-based ordinance or the amendment. And so clearly, having a rights-based ordinance or the amendment wouldn't change that. But it would not afford protection for it. There's, and certainly SEDAF would not partner with a community that would be interested in using language for that purpose.
I have here a community rights-based ordinance for the town of Plymouth, and I assume it had to do with the Northern Pass, but I'm not sure. And one of the paragraphs, three of nine, says, "We, the people of Plymouth, hereby declare that our current system of government is illegitimate and that we adopt this law to create a new system of local governance that recognizes our self-governing authority while securing and protecting our rights." That seems a bit heretical.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, just some feedback. Respectfully, I'm not even sure why this is on the agenda, but, you know, I do have concerns about local rights. But honestly, when I see a presentation that says, "Nature's property, if you own it, you can destroy it." When I see a presentation that says, "Harmful activities are protected," that talks about corporate exploitation, I just see more extreme polarization that, with that polarization prevents us from finding a good and workable middle ground of compromise. And so I just, I get as frustrated with that as if I was hearing a presentation from somebody who had a very different view in terms of state control and things like that. So I don't...
May I respond to?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. So, you know, appreciate it. Thank you. Clearly, there are different opinions. And what we've seen happen at the local and the state level is that it generates conversation. It generates discussion. It brings people to the table to talk about what do you want for your community as opposed to the current structure of the way things are right now. Law and government tends to dictate, you know, what you can and cannot do versus what the community actually envisions for itself. And that's a collective opinion, you know, of the community members coming together, having that discussion. As far as the verbiage in the Plymouth rights-based ordinance, that comes from Article 10 of the New Hampshire Constitution Bill of Rights, which is actually called the Right of Revolution. And so this is about that structure of law and government that is currently in existence, is not functioning from the way that the Bill of Rights says it is supposed to function, which is the people being the origin of government, government acting according to the consent of the people. All magistrates and officers, this is Article 8, being at all times accountable to the people and essentially doing the will of the people. And that doesn't always happen. You know, sometimes there is quite a disconnect between elected officials and townspeople. So what this is about is the coming together and saying that the way that the structure is, is not operating the way that it was intended to, which is to allow the community to come together, elected officials and townspeople, to have that conversation about what they envision for their community, which is unjust. But if you take it... But if you take it to the extent of what the verbiage actually means within the Bill of Rights, it's technically illegitimate. It's not functioning the way that it was drafted to function.
And it is the direct quote, the language you object to is directly from Article 10 of the New Hampshire Constitution. Whenever the ends of government are perverted...
Didn't object to any language, Wayne.
Okay. What, where this, the Plymouth language, by the way, we have a trench going across Great Bay. What they had was, Eversource was going to dig a trench right down the main street of Plymouth, and it would be there for about a year. And it would put many of their local businesses out of business. And like us, when we found out about the project here, we had to spend a hundred and some thousand dollars on legal fees, and we had nothing to base it on, really. Fortunately, the site evaluation committee has turned down Northern Pass for now. But as you saw by the latest batch of questions we got from Eversource, they're questioning everything we've done. They're questioning Todd's testimony, they're questioning data we've provided to them. We're definitely in a one-down situation. I wish we weren't here tonight to discuss something like this, but when you've been hammered so often, ownership of land, the gravel companies funded by Boston Sand and Gravel to get gravel for the big dig, bought out huge tracts of land in Lee, Barrington, and elsewhere, and they grabbled them right out to the edge, and the town had no ability whatsoever to stop them. That's a good example, I think, of a large corporation with disregard to the community turning it into a moonscape. And you can drive down Route 125, and you can see it, the Lee Selectmen were apoplectic. That's what this is aimed at, is to give, we've given personhood to corporations, but we have not given personhood to communities. And that's what, I'm sorry I have to be here to have a presentation, but when you've been in it, like Durham has particularly, we have nothing to base it on. And that's why I thought it would be least interesting to listen to the presentation.
So I just, I want to say that I agree with all the concerns that you've listed, and it perplexes me why we have to abdicate some important things from local control to state oversight that has a profound effect on a community. So we need to move, we need to move the ball. We need to move the ball in a big way. I just don't think polarizing presentations that say, "If you own it, you can destroy it," and, you know, talk about corporate exploitation and how harmful activities are protected, which I don't think is true. I just, I get tired with the polarizing discussions when we really need to move these type of issues forward. So I don't disagree with you there.
Okay.
Does anybody have any opposition to allowing a community member to speak? Go ahead.
Thanks.
You have, no, you have to go over to the microphone, sorry. And we need to have your name.
Hi, my name is Monica Christofely. I'm actually from New Market, New Hampshire, and my 30-second comment is that I'm a member of Alliance for New Market Citizen and Ecosystem Rights, or a community organization that is in the midst of drafting our rights-based ordinance to forbid future chemical trespass from the Great Bay, which would occur if the SeaCoast Reliability Project goes forward. It's going to drill up sediment from, toxic sediment from the bottom of Little Bay. And we are hoping that Durham and Newfield and all the towns around the Little and the Great Bay adopt rights-based ordinances to protect the Great Bay from unsustainable infrastructure and future chemical trespass that we are not allowed to say no to because the permitting agencies permit the harm that these corporations are going to do to the Little Bay and the Great Bay. Thank you so much for letting me say that.
Thank you. And I would like to present, I have permission from, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have permission from the ANZER New Market Group. So each community drafts their rights-based ordinance, generally a bit different, because clearly, you know, not every community is going to see exactly the same thing that they envision for their community. And so if the town council is willing to consider this to be non-public at this point in time, I would be willing to submit it as an example, as an alternate to the Plymouth rights-based ordinance, because it's a very different perspective, and you may find this one to be a bit more embraceable.
Can't be non-public.
The gentleman from Newington, I think.
Hold on.
Yeah, it would have to be public, and so my suggestion would be if you had a different format that might be more appealing to Durham, you could just forward that to me, and we could forward it with the council. And that way you wouldn't be breaching any trust with any other groups you're working with.
Excellent.
But it could be publicly seen and discussed and thought about.
Absolutely. All right. I can do that.
I think the gentleman from Newington...
Okay, one more.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Heber. I'm chairman for the planning board in Newington, and I came here this evening to hear about this, because it piqued my interest. So I have a lot of interest in what is going on this evening. A couple of questions that I have that I want to understand is, what you're saying, doesn't the master plan of the planning, your planning board of your town and also your ordinances cover, what is it that you're picking on? For example, in Newington, we have something that says, "There shall be no transmission lines to the residential area." Period. All right? We say that. We're using that for all we can to fight Eversource, but what does what you're proposing do for each of the towns that will help us, give us more stuff to protect us? And then secondly, the second question I have is, what do you do with public utilities where towns and cities need power? The railroads, look at the railroads we're giving years ago, the power to go ahead and go through towns that towns didn't want them going through, or maybe they did. How do you fight, or how does this basically stop those things? I'm not talking about private corporations, I'm talking about stuff that's sponsored by the government for the benefit of the people as a whole, such as electricity, gas lines, railroads, those kinds of things. That's the kind of thing I would like to be able to hear you respond to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Add roads to that list.
Yeah.
And add roads to that list.
Okay, so about, you know, how does this change the conversation from master plans and current, you know, land use ordinances? It changes the conversation because it brings it into the realm of rights. So when you go into a court system and you're talking about, you know, okay, so the master plan says that there will be no transmission lines in residential areas, there's variances that can be had, the court can very easily override those kinds of decisions made by the local community. Those are expressions of the will of the community. And what this does is it brings it into and says that there are inherent and inalienable rights that each individual has, and you exercise those rights collectively when you cast a vote for a rights-based ordinance or any other ordinance for that matter. And what a rights-based ordinance does is bring it into the realm of rights as opposed to land use. So we're not talking about what the ordinances say, what the state RSA say, we're talking about the community envisions this, that right now, the state can override any of those local ordinances that are based in land use. These ordinances are based in constitutional inherent and inalienable rights, which not all of them are enumerated within our constitutions. And so when you have that conversation, it's driving a very different discussion in the courtroom. It's not talking about, you know, whether you, where it can go, when it can go, how far it can go, all of those kinds of things. It's about the community saying, you know, if we have even five parts per trillion of, let's say, PFOAs in our water, that's proven that none is the best. And yet, there is no mechanism for that within regulatory law. There's no mechanism to say none. Well, with a rights-based ordinance, a community can say, "Well, you know, we don't want any contaminants in our water, and so based on our inherent and inalienable rights, to be able to have a healthy climate, because we depend upon that for survival," it's a matter of saying no to a corporate activity that would violate that right. So the rights are entwined with a prohibition against an activity that would violate that right. Let's say that that gets challenged in court, the conversation is about the rights, not about the intricacies of when it can happen, how many parts per trillion, et cetera. It's about the community has inherent and inalienable rights as individuals in that community that exercise it collectively, the same way that unions do. To be able to bring a law forth that is based on their rights as opposed to land use and all the intricacies around that, it's typically a much less expensive argument, and it changes the conversation in the courtroom. As far as public needs, roads were mentioned, as well as, you know, power and things of that nature, there's a very big difference between public-owned versus private, and this is addressing the private aspect of corporations. So municipalities are considered public corporations. Any one that is filing for a charter with a state as a corporation is typically considered a private corporation. And so take Eversource or any other developer for that matter, they are moving forward with these projects with the intent to profit, which nobody is denying them that. This is not an act of anti-corporate activity. It's an act of anti-corporate activity that violates the rights of the people within the community as defined within their rights-based ordinance. So it's very specific. It's not a broad brush stroke. It's the community being specific about what they do want for their community, and then prohibiting activities that would then violate the rights that they have expressed.
When 55% of a community wants something and 45% doesn't, 55 that passes, who protects the 45% that didn't want it?
It's the same way all votes go.
So...
Except another brief public comment?
Sorry. We'll have a public hearing on this if we decide to go forward with something.
Just an example of what you...
Could I say something final?
Yep.
This is a big step, but what I've seen now through the oil refinery and other things, not to mention the Eversource project, what else do we have? We end up spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend ourselves and nothing to base it on, and we're at a loss. And when Eversource came to the first public presentation, they didn't take any questions, as you remember. They told us what they were going to do. We had no right to say where that line was going. We have no right to question whether we even need it or not. There were other plans, and right now, they're just rolling us up. We have nothing to back us. And that's what bothers me. This may be a good idea, a bad idea, but tell me what we should do to rebalance the rights of towns when they're under siege like we are, to fight back. We just don't have it. Commonwealths do, by the way. There's a difference between a state and a Commonwealth. Commonwealths of Mass, Pennsylvania, Virginia, their rights came from the communities up. Dillon states like New Hampshire came from the state down, and that's one of the challenges we're facing now.
Briefly, you mentioned something that the town of Nottingham enacted a rights-based ordinance in 2008. They started fighting with USA Springs prior to that. The town of Nottingham spent almost a half a million dollars fighting through this regulatory process that we have. When they decided to pass, draft, and then pass a rights-based ordinance, they haven't spent any money. They haven't spent, they haven't been challenged with their rights-based ordinance, they haven't spent any money on legal fees regarding that rights-based ordinance. They used, the community members actually used that rights-based ordinance to notify every potential investor that USA Springs was reaching out to, letting them know that they had passed this law in their town, and that even, you know, the residents had intentions of, you know, backing up that law. And they drove USA Springs into bankruptcy. And just as of last year, the town is now in possession of that property. So it's another example where a lot of money was spent through the regulatory process against all scientific data, permits were issued. The town didn't have an opportunity to say no to having their water basically taken. The studies that had been done showed that the town used about half of the volume of the aquifer, and that USA Springs would have drawn about half of the volume of the aquifer. If you do the math, that means zero. And it drew in contaminants from over two miles away, and yet permits were still issued. So that community clearly felt that their rights-based ordinance was a success because they no longer are dealing with that threat in their community.
But if they're, in Nottingham, if their rights-based ordinance had been challenged in court, would the courts have set it aside because it's a violation of essentially our structure and Dillon's rules and all that? In other words, they declared an ordinance that really was indefensible in court. Am I right?
Well, we've been defending them in court, community environmental legal defense has. Not here in New Hampshire, none of them have been challenged here in New Hampshire.
Why do we need the constitutional amendment if it doesn't need to be defended?
The constitutional amendment affords another layer of protection, makes it very clear, makes it easier for the municipalities when they are enacting rights-based ordinances. The biggest concern we hear from municipalities is the fear of a lawsuit. And so by driving that into the constitution, the communities that have done this work are the ones that make up the New Hampshire Community Rights Network, they want to see this enumerated within the constitution because it protects what they have accomplished at the local level.
Then I guess my supposition is correct, a community who passes a rights-based ordinance is passing an ordinance that they'll have to defend if it's challenged in state court, and it's unlikely they would be successful.
I don't know that we can make that prediction, but would it have to be challenged like any other ordinance if there was opposition? Yes.
If Durham was interested at some point in addressing the home rule issue, changing the state constitution to allow communities to have all rights other than those specifically prohibited by the state, rather than the way it is now, which is we only have those rights the state offers, would your organization be interested in working with us with that type of a narrow approach rather than the community rights-based ordinance approach?
I would say yes. And interestingly, though, I think it might even be a little different, because you're talking about making New Hampshire a home rule state, am I understanding that?
Yes.
Which is actually a bit more broad than what the New Hampshire Community Rights Amendment was proposing. So yes, we would.
And then secondly, if, rather than taking on such a big issue, if we focused on a more finite topic like providing veto power for the municipality for transmission lines or highways or whatever the cross-country issue might be, would that be something you'd be willing to work with us on as well?
The New Hampshire Community Rights Network supported, I believe it was HP 145, regarding giving towns home rule authority. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If you need a place to stay tonight, you face two hours back, I can't thank you enough for coming in. You've given the council and the town something to think about, and that's, there was a whole intent tonight to say there is, there may be other ways to fight back other than hiring so many lawyers and so forth, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And who should I give this information to?
Just, well, she can send it around and just take one.
This, or the packet, this one.
Oh, okay. One packet. Okay. Moving on. Public hearing in action on ordinance 2018-01. A planning board initiated amendment to Chapter 175 zoning of the Durham Town Code to add free board, address sea level rise, and make other minor adjustments to Article 11 flood hazard overlay District Michael Barrett. We did have a first reading on this at the last meeting. Do we have any additional questions or discussion about this change to the ordinance? Did everybody locate their houses on the map to see where you lie in the, I did, and my sister's house...
I think that's the first thing everybody did.
We're all out of the zone.
No, I think, like Durham is really, we are very well-positioned strategically in terms of sea level rise, and that's in part because of where we're located. It's in part because, as a community, we have worked very hard to conserve and protect a huge amount of open space, which helps. And where we have seen development occur is largely out of the floodplain area. So, you know, even with the worst-case 100-year sea level rise estimates, it's a very modest portion of Durham that's impacted. The biggest impacts will probably be roadways, you know, Route 4, where we approached the General Sullivan Bridge, that could be a problem. Community or neighborhood like Cedar Point Road and a few other areas, but much of our public is out of the floodplain. But this ordinance would really provide education for people who do have property in the floodplain to at least consider whether they want to take some additional precautions in light of climate change estimate, sea level rise estimate.
How do you tell if your house is in it or not? There's no, I have, I have one, a property right, looks like it's in the purple.
It's going to be underwater there, Wayne.
Don't tell my insurance company.
Yeah, that's, that's on Old Landing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does look like it's in the purple, doesn't it? Good luck, Wayne.
Oh, no.
Down now.
But on the other hand, Wayne, maybe you won't be alive when it happens, so don't worry about it.
The other change. The other change is this affects, it does require people who are within the floodplain designated areas on the floodplain maps to provide the, I think, I'm looking at the Michael Barrett two foot free board space, which is, I think, a prudent requirement, given the location of these properties and the high likelihood that we'll see sea level rise.
For new construction.
For new construction. Right. And interestingly, when Cameron Wake came a couple of weeks ago to talk with the leadership team, they showed us a video of a basement at Strawberry Bank in Portsmouth. And as the king, at a king tide, and as the king tide came in, they had a live feed of this basement and you saw the water come up and go down. It was just fascinating.
Is that the one they filled in? They filled in that basement?
They, they, no, it was just, it was a dirt floor, stone foundation basement and two and a half, three feet of water came in and then went out during the king tide.
Well, it's, it's kind of happening in my basement today. It's lower.
Are you getting water today? I thought I was going to get it.
I just want to say a couple of things. One is between the information that was on the web and the council communication, I, I think this is a great example of a zoning change, which is based on evidence and science. And, and I appreciate the fact that the things that we're changing and the communication that references back to the reasoning why. So I just, I feel from my perspective, the town planner really put together a very, a very complete package.
That's Michael Barrett. He took the lead on this and really worked hard to outline it all.
I'd say it's, also it's proactive. It's like it really sets us up for the future regardless of what happens. So I think it's a good idea.
I, I believe if you adopt this tonight, we'll be the first community in New Hampshire to do so, to adopt these advisory recommendations. And I, I think, I think that's correct. That's what they were saying, so.
You want to read the?
So I'll open the public hearing. The Durham Town Council does hereby, in accordance with section 175 dash 14 of the Durham zoning ordinance, open the public hearing on ordinance number 2018 dash oh one. A planning board initiated zoning change that would amend article 15 flood hazard overlay district to add free board, address sea level rise and make other minor adjustments.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Okay. Anyone to speak to this ordinance? I guess not. Okay.
I motion that we close the public hearing on ordinance 2018 dash oh one.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? All right.
The Durham Town Council does hereby, in accordance with section 175 dash 14 of the Durham zoning ordinance, adopt as presented ordinance 2018 dash oh one. A planning board initiated zoning change that would amend article 15 flood hazard overlay district to add free board, address sea level rise and make other minor adjustments.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
If you didn't do such a good job, we'd have questions.
Okay. Our next item of business is the continued discussion regarding development of the 2018, 19 town council goals. And Todd has been very kind to provide us with a one page draft, although Councilor Bennett has suggested that maybe the counselor, councils need to come up with the goals instead of Todd, which is probably true. But I appreciate the fact that Todd has taken the time. And obviously the things that, the individual tasks that he will have to do, he will provide us with updates on those, the specific tasks as we go through the year. Does anybody have any? Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to add that I, I didn't just like sit down and think of these out of the blue. This is taking all the feedback you provided in last year's goals and trying to winnow them down to one page, so.
Yep.
So I, because these are goals, I, I firmly believe they're missing three things. However, if we don't change it, I still will vote for this because I all want to, I want us all rowing in the right direction. The first thing is, is we talk about infrastructure in a parking garage, which is a big question mark. But we leave out the most needed infrastructure in the town, and that's a fire department where we have 25, actually, well, 25 employees working in a substandard facility. And it doesn't raise the list of our goals. That I think needs to be changed. Secondly is, is public safety, whether it's the residents or our police officers or fighting, our firefighters need the best reasonable infrastructure. And I firmly believe that we need to have a goal that addresses some of the issues that exist in our communication network. A police officer should be able to communicate with other police officers in Stratford County with his portable, whether he's in downtown Durham or out on Bay Road. We didn't include that. And then lastly, we talk about economic sustainability, but yet one of our greatest opportunities in, in front of us, which will take a couple of years, is the West Edge area of UNH, which sits in the Orley District. And I just don't know why we wouldn't set it as a goal to proactively sync ourselves up with what UNH is doing and to look at our zoning and to make sure that if there are acceptable changes in our zoning for that area, given what they have there, we don't have to make those changes across an entire district of Orley that includes things like Mass Road and the Moore Fields. So for infrastructure, I think we've missed two big ones. And for, you know, economic sustainability, I, I think we've missed another one. But I'm willing to row, row with you guys. I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Well, if those things were considered part of the laundry list of things that are going to be done over the year, would that be okay for you? Meaning it's not as though they would be ignored or it's just they wouldn't be on this general kind of thing?
I, I don't know why we would not have them on a list for the goals for an upcoming year. That's my opinion. We've list, you know, listed public infrastructure and highlighted a parking structure, but left out a fire department, which is totally inadequate and not, not meeting current standards for 25.
Well, it is an excellent point. My intent was to include all of those items you've mentioned and others under this last goal, the refined plans for new and existing infrastructure. But it is very appropriate to list them as standalone goals too. So you just have to decide. I, I can only get so much on one page, so.
Why would you list it as standalone? Why wouldn't you just add the fire station to, you know, address the concern there? The West Edge District, I think, is part of continued cooperation and collaboration efforts with UNH. You could highlight it in there. And the issues with communication network, I'm not sure what you're suggesting there, Jim, in terms of where you would put those. And also was that in the budget?
This year it was in the budget to have a consultant look at the designs. It's in the SIP as a planning placeholder for 2019. That's why I thought it should be a goal. I mean, for instance, you could say refine plans for new and existing public facilities and infrastructure, you know, comma, focusing on the fire department and public safety network. I just, I think that they rise to a level that's higher than the structured parking downtown.
I, Jim, I agree with what you're saying and maybe I'm part to blame. And maybe it's from my sense that there's agreement that we need a new fire station. We've talked with UNH about it and kind of that process has been beginning. While the parking, we have no idea what we need, if anything, what direction to go to. And I think more I wanted to do was to kind of start a process of us talking about what we see the need is, if any, for parking. So it's a, one is definitely there's, it was kind of like with the police station. We knew we needed a police station, boom, and went and worked on it. I, I think fire department were there. We have to figure out how to get it to come about. While the other one was more, we need to really understand what, where we are and what we need to do. If that makes sense at all.
I just don't think we're that far along with the fire department. And again, maybe there are three things for infrastructure, but again, I just forward the premise that, you know, that they're of equal importance. And my preference would be that they're listed, but if they're not, you know, again, we're all rowing in the same direction, so.
Yeah, the, I agree with Jim there about the fire department can easily be put in the third bullet point, continue cooperation and collaborative efforts with UNH. You can, you can, because that's already in progress. I mean, sites have been looked at, so I mean, it's on the, it's on the drawing board. You can just put it right in that line without.
Or the last one.
Or the last one.
Or the last one. Sure, either one. But it is a, a combined program with UNH, so I think it would be more appropriate to put it with the UNH.
And I think your point about West Edge is very well taken. I think that's a very important thing for us to work on sooner than later. And we've talked about that communication system for years as well.
Okay, so I don't actually want to go back to that. So when you look under this, when the goal is, the hope of this was to have a broader goal and then Todd would take the broader goal and come up with actionable things. So therefore, I mean, I'm almost at the point of the last one, just saying refining plans for new and existing public facilities and infrastructures, period. Todd would then delineate, he's, he's coming up with it. Clearly the fire station is one of them because last, I think, we left, we'd only come up with kind of a vague plan. He will then put forward what is, what is the, how do we move the ball forward on the fire station in terms of it?
All those items, all those items are on my intended sublist. And I, I had, originally this last one did not include the downtown structured parking, but Kenny and Kitty and I met and there was a suggestion that we include it, so I added that in. So we could take it out and then list them all there.
Oh, I, if, if we do that, I have no problem. I guess I, I'm asking a question is, is it good for us to have in the council goals, the fire station for, for two reasons. One is to say to UNH that it's, it's important to the town council. And then second, to honestly, to say to the firefighters that, those employees, that it, that it's important. And I agree with you. If we don't list it, but Todd is doing an action plan, you know, it's, it's not important because it's listed here. It'll be important and I'm comfortable with that, but I just, I, I don't, I wonder if there's a message that.
I mean, I think, I mean, honestly, you can add after structured parking fires. I mean, again, that wouldn't hurt, it doesn't hurt anything, but I, I just want to make sure that Todd, I mean, that's fine with me, either way.
It's fine.
It'll fit. But it, I think, I just want to make sure that we're clear that he is developing like actionable stuff that fills out the, we just took that. And I'm sure at some point Todd will come forward with the actionable thing. That's exactly how we did on the school thing. And that clarified to everybody what all the actionable plans are. And I, I just had one other one actually, which is of course the one that generates probably the most controversy, which is the budget goal. And my concern with the budget goal is this. It's like, and it's exactly goes to your point about the fire station, that sometimes when your goal is strictly no tax increase, it, it goes beyond what the needs are of the town. So you, by focusing strictly on no tax increase, things that actually have to get done or should get done, don't get done. And so that concerns me. So whenever I've come up, or at least my brain now, when I'm trying to wrap myself around budget goals, and Carden, I really do appreciate the downward pressure of the budget. I, I do. Because I, I think it's an excellent idea that he's put forward that we really review everything and particularly reviewing new hires because it does raise the base of the budget. But I, my concern is the, is this a viable budget? Or is this a, a goal that we can actually achieve? I think Jim brought it up before. I mean, we, the revenue that came in last year was really high and that allowed us to do a lot of things and that allowed us to kind of squeak in the budget but goal. But I'm not sure that we have that revenue this coming year. And I, I don't want to get in a situation where we're saying, okay, we need this, we really need this, whether it be a staffing saying, Public Works really needs this, and we say, you know what, our budget goal was zero, we can't do that, let's just kick the can down the road. So I, it worries me. And it worried me with like when we did the, the school budget and we come up with this numerical thing like, we're going to hold the 3%. And I'm like, okay, what, what does that actually mean? Is that a, is it a viable goal? And I think coming to that, what on the school side we did, I, we were like, let's roll the budget over one year and assume like, again, like the road programs came, what does that baseline actually even look like in terms of expenses? And then what is, and this is a toughie, the projection of the revenue sitting out there, is a actual zero tax increase viable? Does that hurt us actually as a town in a way that long-term is bad for us? So that's my, my concerns.
Yeah, I would, I would respond to say this is a goal. It doesn't say we will not spend more than 848 per dollar. And Todd will do, I think, what he did this year, say, here, I met your goal, here, I didn't meet it, and here's what everyone wants if, you know, Santa Claus were alive. So, so I would anticipate he would do the same thing this year. And with the able help of Councilor Lawson, we were able to do it in 2018 when it looked like we weren't going to be able to. And by having the goal, it forced, you know, the town to look at things that they wouldn't otherwise look at, like different fees and other structures where we can make money for services that, or we can just pay for them through property taxes. Well, I think it's good to pay for some things through services and some for property taxes. You know, we've had, seen good demand for parks and rec. We made, I don't know, $50,000 last year, made $150,000 through parking and, you know, we made quite a bit of money in other ways, getting tax revenue from people who don't necessarily live in town. And we did that because we had goals, whereas before we, we didn't. And so like lots of times you'll see different fees that the town has for different things. We never changed them. So, you know, you have 15 years of inflation and the fee doesn't change. Doesn't make sense. Someone's getting a bargain, someone isn't. So I think, I think the goal's really good. You know, I looked at, I have to commend Todd and, and the council because when we first came up with a goal in, I think it was 2014, we were in the top 15% of towns in spending. And now four years later, we're in the top 19%. So that's a significant, you know, to be in the top 20% instead of the top 15%, I think is very helpful for people who want to live in town. We've had all this discussion about whether or not there's affordable housing or not and how do poor people move into town or people who are less well off. And if we just keep raising property taxes, we're still in the top 20% of all towns in, in New Hampshire. And we know that you guys are going to be spending money. And we know that you guys are going to be spending money pretty soon, right, on middle school? And that's going to cost a lot of money. So, I think it's very appropriate to have a goal, as opposed to, you know, this isn't a flat tax or anything, this is a goal that nine educated, 10 educated people are going to sit around a table and discuss. And if it doesn't make sense, because, you know, there's tremendous things that we'd have to forego, I think we would do it. And Todd would have met the goal, he provided us with a budget, did met it, we just didn't accept it.
I, I mean, the way it worked last, the budget worked, I thought it was great, I really did. I thought it was like, because you gave options, you forced us to make the difficult decisions. And I really, again, I do appreciate Carden, the downward pressure, because it does make us, you just don't carte blanche, you really do have to make difficult decisions. So, I mean, I'm just, again, as long as it was like last year, I really liked it, I liked it.
That's my assumption.
So, do we like, do we like them?
Yeah, I mean, I can live with it.
How about you, Jim, you okay?
With which approach, I guess?
You were going to put, are you going to put the fire station under UNH? And are you going to keep it on your list of, your list of to-dos?
Well, that's the question, but I'm happy either way.
I would consider adding it for two reasons. One is, it's there for UNH to see if it's necessary. Although, again, I want to stress that, that's nothing negative about UNH, just, you know, having it there. And then secondly, for the firefighters, that it's a goal that we have. We may not get there this year, but.
So, how about if I take this feedback and bring you back a final version under unanimous consent at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have gotten it all.
Sounds good to me.
Todd, I'm wondering, just in terms of, you mentioned West Edge, and we saw some feedback today on that, if that should also be put in the UNH one, just to show them, yes, indeed, we're looking at it. We know it's going to impact the town, and we want to see the data.
I guess if we're going to include West Edge, do we want to also include 66 Main Street and Hetzel and Alexander? Because those are, those are coming up sooner, and they're all, they're all very important.
Yeah, why don't you take a shot at it and see what it looks like? We don't want to put in too many things, like really, we don't want that, okay? So, maybe it's good to forget those, but, but you could put in some broad language that would encompass all three of them, as opposed to listing them.
It's a statement to the public, too, not just UNH, this is important, so.
It doesn't have to be incorporated into the goals, but, you know, my concern is, is there may be things that are acceptable to the community in the West Edge. And they may align with UNH, but I really think that we need now to have a West Edge kind of like zoning district, because those changes may not be appropriate for all of Orley. And that's a very big district with, you know, a lot of natural resources, and, you know, the gateways and things like that, you know? And so, that's, that's one I concern.
Listen, they're talking about putting private property on the site, and like the hotel, too. And that's going to get confusing, isn't it, as to what's taxable and what isn't taxable, and what's covered by zoning, what isn't covered by town zoning? And I had the same question, is this, is that kind of activity covered by the third goal, cooperative and collaborative with UNH?
I think it is, that was in my, in our mind when we crafted it, I think.
And in your longer versions, it's a subheading of that one, right?
It's becoming clearer that the new president was brought in because he's familiar with the Iron Triangle. At the UNC Chapel Hill, he built it, and.
I thought it was the Research Triangle, is it the Iron Triangle?
No, that's in, yeah, the Iron Triangle's in Eastern Europe somewhere.
Well, we're hoping we don't come to that.
This is new information. Thank you. But that's, that's, that's what he's, when he was in Concord speaking, that's what all he talked about, was this new Creativities Center, Research Park, and it works. But what does it mean to the town? The only other thing, I've been here now since 13, and I, at first, I was a little uneasy about the tax rate goal, but we need to make, I look at it, it's better than a statutory tax cap, which is what some towns do, and they really straightjacket themselves. But it does instill discipline in our work, and we all have favorite things. And so I think it's working. The only thing I'd point out is that we had the advantage of large commercial tax-based increase, too. But I think, I think other than that, I think it's fine, and I don't, I don't have a problem with putting the fire station. That's what, so let's do that.
Okay, all right, new business.
New business. So, just raising an issue that's been before the council before, and it's been before the Parks and Rec Committee. And just, I think, back in the fall, when we had people from O.R.A.Y.A. here, at no time did we feel that there was any fiscal impropriety, but we just felt that there needed to be some kind of independent oversight of the organization, and had a discussion, and I think it led to an agreement whereby they're willing to go ahead and do an independent financial audit. And concurrent with that, for really several years on Parks and Rec Committee, there've been some concerns about some of the philosophical underpinnings of O.R.A.Y.A. And we, as a committee, had approached O.R.A.Y.A., I think, on two occasions, and asked that Parks and Rec be able to have a representative on O.R.A.Y.A.'s board, just to be able to know more what was going on, have some involvement, to be able to express some opinions. And that never came to fruition. And then there was the alleged incident that, I guess, happened last week. And to me, that heightened more of my concerns about O.R.A.Y.A. And certainly, the incident is alleged, but my feeling is it really needs to be looked at systemically and looked at in a way that I feel reassured about, that I have confidence in. And I think it raised to me, again, the need to have some independent people on the board of O.R.A.Y.A., so not just a Durham member, but someone not appointed by O.R.A.Y., but appointed by Durham. And when Kitty, Todd and I met with the Medbury select people, they were very concerned about it as well. And they independently, before we got there, raised the issue that Medbury was thinking they would like to have a representative. So, with all due respect to O.R.A.Y.A., and all they provide to our community, and certainly great admiration and respect for the many volunteer hours that people gave, I drafted kind of a resolution, and certainly a work in progress. I'll pass those out, and Todd helped me refine it, so one of my wheres gets changed. But my feeling is that Durham contributes quite a bit of money to O.R.A.Y.
One resolution, or is it?
There's, each one has two pages.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you do it as a, Durham contributes quite a bit to O.R.A.Y. financially. We let them use our fields, and we provide them with office space. And so I think inherent in that is some sort of oversight, so. So, the next to last, whereas, scratch out that next to last one, and instead substitute the one that's on page two.
The one that says, whereas the monetary and monetary, not.
Yeah, that's the one to scratch out.
Scratch that one out.
I'm not really comfortable putting in about the incident. You know, we're forgetting, in this country, we have a practice of people are innocent till proven guilty. And we were way ahead, we don't really know what was said at that meeting. We have second-hand and third-hand, and yet, we're out there with this, which sort of assumes it happened the way.
Well, actually, we have firsthand, maybe you don't, but I have firsthand.
You were there?
No, but someone who was there.
Then it's second-hand to you, from that person.
Oh, okay, so second-hand. So, but Wayne, this is not, what this is ensuring is that there is a fair investigation. This, it refers to what happened as alleged, and all it's asking for is an independent.
But you're saying if factual reflects poorly, and you're putting it in the resolution, right? But we don't know yet, because O.R.A.Y. is conducting an investigation, which we don't have the results of, is that right?
But, and you're right, but this is stating, my concern is, through the history of O.R.A.Y., I don't have confidence that they, through their own mechanism, will do a justified assessment of the situation and take the appropriate action if they do find that there was a problem.
What do you base that feeling on?
Many things that I've heard throughout the years.
Hang on, Kenny, what if we just took that out and just, rather than focus on the alleged incident, wouldn't it be better if we said, we want to be on the board, and we will, we will not give you money until we have put somebody on the board, rather than? Is it really necessary that the town of Durham get involved in this O.R.A.Y. thing?
I think so, because the town of Durham gives O.R.A.Y. over $40,000 a year. They're supposed to, as, as I think Todd added in what he wrote, they really need to reflect, I think, the values that we would want to see in our community. They use our fields, they are in position of power over our kids. If this happened in the school, with a school coach, that coach would be gone, if that, if the alleged incident was true. And I just don't have the confidence that that organization will go through with what really needs to get done. I mean, this isn't the first incident that's come to light, and there are many stories percolating about other serious things, so.
Did you have your hand up earlier?
I did, actually, I just wanted to clarify. I mean, I know what you're saying about the, this alleged incident, but I think that what has been forgotten is there was not, there's another incident that was not alleged at all. There was actually a punishment that was handed out. So, there had to be an investigation by O.R.A.Y. that resulted in the suspension of a board member for three months. That's not in dispute, that's not an alleged at all, that actually occurred. So, my concern is that this is, and the way I'm thinking about it is like, so now you've had a second incident, this one alleged. So, if I'm, I know if, on the school board, and particularly in the town, anytime that occurs, it should trigger some kind of examination of your program, just to protect yourself. So, in terms of this, when I'm looking at O.R.A.Y., from the town's perspective, it's different. When a nonprofit, if they were operating in complete isolation of us, then we really have no right to say much to O.R.A.Y. That is not the case here. The case is that O.R.A.Y. is operating in our building next door, they're operating on our fields, and we're giving them money. And when that happens, it can blow back on the town. So, there's, the town has a right in that instance to ask for certain things to occur. And I believe on that, even more so, a higher standard on the school side. The incidents occurring, again, if O.R.A.Y. has an incident occurring, this alleged incident is a Title IX violation. If that occurred on Oyster River property, Oyster River, actually, the Title IX allegation that would be, or the Title IX complaint that would be filed against, filed, would be filed against Oyster River Cooperative School District, not actually occurring, not O.R.A.Y. So, that has to be taken in consideration, that each of the entities, the towns themselves that have fields, as well as the school district, need to be, need to be protected in that situation. So, I think there's a difference between saying we're going to have a member of Durham on the board of O.R.A.Y., and having a representative of the town on O.R.A.Y. And that's essential. It provides protection for the town that should be done. Again, any, if they're sharing things, the town should have an opportunity to have protection for that.
I absolutely, and I brought that up when I asked for the audit, and I said, I think we should have, I agree with everything you've said. I'm just a little, and I, and I found it abhorrent, what was alleged to have been said. And remember, nothing physical happened. Somebody made a remark that was really untoward. I go back to when I was.
Allegedly.
Allegedly made a remark. Now, I went back, well, I used to assign kids to O.R.A.Y. teams. We didn't meet in a bar, we met at somebody's house. And we would rate the players, not by gender, but we'd rate them on a one, two, three basis, simply to balance the team, so that there would, no one crew was going to dominate the team. And then some parents weren't necessarily in agreement with the way we did it, because we didn't want, back then, the idea was participation in our competition, that has changed now. And so I, I'm aware that, at least rating players was in the bylaws to make sure we had balanced teams. And there was no mention of gender, many of the girls were better than the boys at the time. But I'm a little leery about, in this day and age, going ahead and condemning an activity that they haven't completed, completely investigated.
I don't think there's any condemning, this isn't, this isn't a high hoop to jump through. All they need to do is complete an investigation, that's all.
Yeah, this says three things, I think, in terms of what's wanted. One is, we have an expectation to have an independently conducted investigation. I believe that's in line with what O.R.A.Y. is saying. We're just saying that we have an expectation, that they shouldn't. And that if there is, if there is a problem, that remedial steps are taken that we, that are deemed necessary. Wouldn't we expect that? What's wrong with us saying that? Okay, that's all it says. And the third thing that we've added, which I philosophically agree with, is, is you're going to need to change your bylaws and allow the towns to appoint a member to your board. And if you don't do that, then you can go on being O.R.A.Y. It's just going to be going on without the funding from Durham.
Yep, but you also get the facilities and the fields, too, to consider. Go ahead, Carden.
The reason I don't like this is because there's no reason for it right now.
Yeah.
You know, something allegedly happened, we don't know why. We just passed a budget where we talked about, should we have someone on their board? And we decided not to. And we said, you have to give us audited statements to our satisfaction before we're going to make certain payments to you. And we did that. If we wanted to ask for someone on the board, we could have done it then. What's happened between now and then? There's an alleged incident, so now everyone's excited. But we don't, it's alleged, as Council Burton said, you're innocent until proven guilty. There's already some pushback we're getting, that it wasn't, you know, what it was alleged to have been. We don't know, I'm not going to take sides until we find out. But this is like, you know, we're, it's like we're jumping on the bandwagon without knowing the facts. And the fact that we didn't ask for this when we had all the leverage, the budget, means the only reason we're asking for this now is because there was an alleged incident.
No.
And I don't, why? What happened between now and December, middle of December?
Well, actually, nothing has changed there. The things that I just said about our liability and our needs were there. We just, I don't think that was clearly articulated, and the role that a nonprofit on public property, that discussion really never came up. That is a very important discussion moving forward.
So, why didn't it come up?
Why?
I mean, did we just happen to?
Why did come up this lesson?
I mean, you're just kind of making the point that there was an alleged incident, but forget about that, I just thought of the fact that, wow, we might have some capability here. That's hard to believe. I mean, why can't we wait a month? And then if we want, and if the thing comes out, and there's culpability or something that we don't like, we can bring this back and say, hey, see, you know, they did the review, stuff isn't so good there. We need someone on the committee. Right now, we're. Right now, we're just jumping in because, really, I think, Al, it's because of this alleged incident. I don't think, I'm quite certain, I would say, that if this incident hadn't taken place, we wouldn't have this in front of us.
Okay, so I'm going to disagree with you on that, because on this, again, I'm pulling in, but I'll just say, on the school side, it has come to our attention about nonprofits and the liability of the Oyster River School District with nonprofits. I was not aware of that. So, in terms of me jumping to why I want this, it has, the incident really is secondary to what I've learned subsequently. So, it's like saying, "Why put seat belts on? We didn't ask for them 10 years ago." Well, now that we've learned further information, I think that there's a real reason, from a town's perspective, to have some protection.
So, you're fine with taking out whereas five, whereas it has come to the attention of the town council? Take that out and take out six? And just say, because we support them with $40,000, we should have someone on the council? I would do that.
That's what I said earlier. Hang on, Counsel Tobias.
See, the way I see the fifth one, whereas it's come to the attention, the allegation is what, it's not whether the allegation is true or not. The allegation reflects poorly on Oyster River Youth Association. This is, this is an organization that is directly dealing with our children. And to have that type of allegation reflects poorly.
We should deal with facts.
And, well, the allegations themselves...
Allegations are allegations.
Yeah, but they're going to reflect badly. People are going to hear.
Do you think we should react to Bill's allegations all the time?
I'm talking, but these are children. And I think if we're giving money to any organization...
No, it was adults who did this, not children.
If we're giving money to any organization, and we have no representation, or even really any type of oversight, I found, I find that concerning. I was concerned back during the budget process of just handing them $42,000 without having any representation. And from what I understand, we have attempted to get representation and have been put down. Maybe when we were discussing it during the budget process, we should have pushed a little further with them and say, "Well, we do need it." This has happened, whether the allegation is true or not, the allegation in itself is something that is, that excites interest and a negative reflection on OYRI.
Ronnie Peetkins was in Alabama, and there was an article about it in a local paper.
It was, it was in the Washington Post on Wednesday afternoon. And that's, that in itself, that's where I'm seeing it, is the allegation itself is concerning to me, because that, we don't have any say. We have no, we're being asked to, Todd is being asked from the town of Durham's perspective to comment on it in newspaper articles and on television. And somehow, people are probably then drawing a line that we have some, some, you know, responsibility in it, when we have no other responsibility than to hand them over a check. And we have no say, and we have no direction in the investigation, to be sure. Because I'm sure that they could go through that process, and there will be people that say, "That's fine. I accept the result of the investigation." And there'll be the other half that said, "I don't accept the result of the investigation." It's going to be split, I think. And that way, if we have somebody, if we had somebody on the board who would see it and be in that room and understand it, I think we would be able to accept what, we'd be more comfortable with whatever came forward.
I have a suggested change. I would say that where, there's therefore in this says, "Moreover, the release of this funding." I would say, "Moreover, funding in 2019 and future years is contingent on the town of Durham being able to appoint a representative of their choosing to the Board of Directors." So, I don't know how long that process takes with ORYA. We did make a commitment to the funding for this year. So, it really sets in motion what we want. But it doesn't presuppose that we know the timeframe. But I will say that the first part of the therefore, I'm comfortable with. It says that, you know, we take this seriously, and we're holding you to independently investigating this and determining what, if, what, if any remedial actions are necessary. I mean, it's...
Just very quickly, and right, it's an alleged incident. You know, there's an incident before that, and that's rating kids in a bar. That should never have been the venue for coaches to get together and draft kids, because that draft said, you know, that he's a really good hitter, or he's a whatever. That never should have even been in a bar. The extension of the alleged comment makes that situation worse. But to me, that's, it's why I started talking tonight. I don't see this as a one-off. There have been concerns. They've not risen to our table before. They've risen at Parks and Rec. And this, to me, indicated a culture. And that's why, you're right, Carden, if that incident didn't happen, this paper wouldn't have been in front of you. But that incident, I couldn't overlook. And I thought it was necessary for us to say, "We want you to do your due diligence." And that's all this is asking them to do. We're not cutting their funding. We're not asking them to do anything unreasonable. We're asking them to just proceed as they should.
If someone alleged that something happened at Parks and Rec, would we say, "Well, because there's allegations, and Durham is attached to Durham Parks and Rec, we should get rid of Parks and Rec?" Or we should establish a resolution to make sure it's handled? Or would we wait and see if the allegation really made sense?
If I was on this board, I would have suspended the involved people pending the outcome of the allegation, because the allegation is so serious.
But really, you know, with due respect, guys, we're not asking what any one of us would do. We're saying, "How does the town of Durham react to this?" And if it's Al Howens' concerns, then you would take out the fifth and sixth paragraph. And because it has nothing to do with that, right?
I was going to say, the fifth, clearly, you could take, I mean, because, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but like, to me, the two things that I think, particularly if you're a nonprofit, that you should do to protect yourself and protect us. The first, we've already accomplished, which was to put in the audit. The second thing we're really looking is for representation. And the reason that we want the representation is because we have a monetary stake in it, and a facility stake in a liability. So, I can live with personally, really, and maybe it is somewhat inflammatory, so that, one, two, three, so take, so I could live with five coming out. Really, in the sixth one, what we're asking is that we're withhold, I mean, I don't think it's, it's pretty much, to me, non-negotiable about the representative on ORYA. We need that. It's for their protection, it's for our protection. I think that, I don't have anything wrong that we just say that we'll release funds upon completion of a successful, independent thing. That's a reasonable request.
But so, you want to take out the fifth paragraph? And I would also take out this...
I would take the fifth out.
I would take out the last, the last half of the sixth one. Why would we want to say we're complicit?
Well, there's an amended one.
That's the one you should cross out.
There's an amended one right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would concur with taking out five, but I don't see any issue with amended six, because it's very general in nature.
The amended six.
Amended six. And I would say five should come out. But I think the intent is still there with five out and amended six.
Yeah.
I think if, taking out five doesn't draw, by, this, five draws attention to the incident. But the main concern, really, is that we should have representation. We always should have had representation. We just never forced it. So, if we take that out, we just, we just are proceeding with, "We should have representation," period. Because we're handing over our children and our money and our facilities.
Well, we have, there are people from Durham on the board that have children in the program.
But those aren't under our purview, though.
I know, but they're not irresponsible people, either.
Well, no, but they're not, we're the one that, the town, though, they're not, they're not qualified, they're not handing the money over. We're handing the money over as a town.
Wayne, the evening that ORYA came, I forget which gentleman, but stated they're an inbred organization. And I think that's why we want an independent person.
I'm not opposed to doing that. I just don't want to get in a defamation of character suit here, talking about these people as if they're, you know, we don't... First of all, I have to disagree with something you said, Charlie. We should not make a decision based on what newspapers are saying what about anything. This takes sober adult thought to make sure we don't demean somebody who shouldn't be demeaned before we find out what happened, for sure. Todd has already made the decision. He told in the newspaper that we weren't going to release the money until there's an investigation. Isn't that what you told him?
No.
What did you say? Because I was surprised you went as far as you did without the council voting for it.
I...
What did you say?
I indicated to the Chair of the ORYA Board that, moving forward, as we look to 2019, that I would insist upon a modification to the ORYA bylaws to provide a Durham and school district representative to the board. And absent that, in essence, you won't see a recommendation from me for their funding. And what this incident has brought to light is the complete lack of oversight by the town of Durham in terms of how ORYA operates. And I believe that's a problem. I think while there are some great people who live in Durham who are active in this organization, there needs to be a formal representative from the town of Durham sitting there who can certify to us that what's happening is appropriate. And we don't have that right now. Now, another question I have in terms of this proposed...
But you said that without having the board, the council, back you up on that yet, right?
I did say that, yes. I said that I would not move forward a recommended budget to the council, which is in my purview, unless that was in place. Now, ORYA could say, "Nope, we're not going to do it." And I could not recommend a budget for them. And they could come to the council and urge you to not follow that path.
Which is not what Todd said. Everything Todd said was appropriate.
But I thought, when I read, I read it, and I'm not being critical, because I think that's what I'd like to see. But I'm getting a little nervous about going too fast, too soon before... How can there ever be an unbiased evaluation now the way we're talking about the incident? Can we really expect now an objective?
Yes, absolutely.
Because the facts will prove. I mean...
I guess my question is, when there's language about an independently conducted investigation, by what standards are we going to base that? We don't, we don't know who was involved with the investigation by ORYA. We don't, we don't know, we don't, they've informed us they're conducting an investigation. I'm sure they are. I'm sure there are some good people as part of that. But it's hard for us to have insight into that at this point in time. Now, maybe we will, and maybe we'll be completely satisfied. But if ORYA goes through a process and comes to some outcome, and the council's not satisfied, what's the litmus test we're going to use to decide that we should release the funds?
Well, I think that the question to investigate is not whether or not that remark was said. But if it was said, does this mean, does this reflect a pervasive way that operation is now working? You see what I mean? Because that's a really serious issue. It would, it's going to take, and I think having an independent person review what actually happened, as far as they can tell, because they've all got lawyers now that'll be interviewed. I mean, it's not like the White House, for crying out loud. But, you know, what I'm saying is, is there a pervasive attitude reflected by this incident? Or was it an isolated incident where somebody made a remark that was really stupid and offensive? I don't know how to get at it.
To answer your question, Todd, is, yeah, we use the term "satisfied." And that's, that's not much of a litmus. But I think the message is to ORYA, "You better do a good job on the independent investigation." And if you do a good job, we're reasonable. I think we'd be satisfied. If you do a cursory, and I have no belief that they would, based on what I've heard, you know, we're going to have to discuss it.
And if we had representation on it, we'd be sitting here and feel confident that it was going to be an adequate job done. The fact that we don't have, and that they have been resistant in allowing us to have representation on the board over the years, has put us here. If we had always had it, if they had been open with it, it would have been in their best interest to offer it up. Because we could be sitting here and be happy with the investigation or not happy with the investigation.
So, the question is, how do you want to proceed? I just would like to say, and I feel bad, because I've been the, sort of the spokesperson for the town on this, and that's in part because other people aren't providing a lot of information. My goal is to simply ensure there is a appropriate impartial investigation done, and ORYA takes whatever steps are needed to address whatever is found or not found. And going forward, I've come to the determination, after watching this for a long time, that, watching ORYA for almost 20 years now, that it would be appropriate at long last to have a representative from each of the towns in the school district. And I think, absent that, it puts us in a situation where we really have no insight, and it's just, it's not appropriate. We appropriate a lot of money. They use our building at no cost. They use all of our fields. They're providing services on behalf of the town, in a way, indirectly, to our residents. And that takes nothing away from the great people who are involved in ORYA, the hundreds of thousands of volunteer hours that community members from Durham Lee and Madbury dedicate as coaches and referees, and the great experiences so many kids have. And it does not prejudge what the results of this issue are going to be. All I've said is that a fair and independent investigation needs to take place, and we need to be satisfied that that's been done.
So, I'll make a motion to try and bring it to closure. You guys can change it, but...
Jim, if I could ask a question before Jim brings it to closure? And could just make a couple of suggestions? I don't know, Jim, maybe you were going to make a suggestion.
I was.
Okay, so I'll wait.
Okay, well, I, you're the one who brought this forward. How do you feel about Jim?
Sure. I brought this forward as a draft to take cracks at it. It was something troubling to me, and I, and I also have seen Todd be the point person. I don't think that's a good place for Todd to be. And I thought, we, as a town council, owe it to our community and really owe it to Todd, too, to just discuss this matter. Whatever happens, that's why we're here.
I was just listening, so I was going to take a stab at it, but... So, I'll make a motion to pass a town council resolution presented with the following changes. The first change is that the fifth whereas is deleted. And also a change in the therefore clause, where it now reads, "Moreover, the release of funds in 2019 and future years is contingent on the town of Durham being able to appoint one representative of their choosing to the ORYA Board of Directors."
Why do you need in 2019, why don't you just say in future years?
Sure.
In future years?
That's, I, my suggestion to them for 19 was just to give ORYA, you know, all the time they need to make changes to bylaws, which can take time and require meetings and discussion.
But 2019's a future year. So, I just thought, just say in future years.
This is, the way this is written, does that mean that they could either replace one of their existing appointments with this appointment, or is this assumed they're going to add an appointment?
They're going to have to change their bylaws.
So, it's up to them.
They have to figure that out, they, what makes sense for them.
This person should probably not be a parent of a student participating? Or how are we going to deal with the...
To be determined when we select that person, if they want to make the change. To, to be determined when we select that person, if they want to make the change.
It would be like committee appointment.
Committee appointment. Do we want to make it, it says the town of Durham being able. Who's the town of Durham? Do we want to say the town council?
Durham Town Council?
Yeah. Yeah, the Durham, that's a good change.
As opposed to my other one.
Appointing them? I mean, we, recommendation?
I have a couple other just questions to, to those amendments. So you're saying for the sixth paragraph would be the one over here, that ends at O R Y A, oh, the value?
So that becomes the fifth now?
I'm not sure.
Right?
On the second page?
Yeah, the one on the second page, that, yep, where it says change to the bottom part, would now become our fourth, because we're going to scratch out.
Okay, I would prefer to that, that we just scratch out. I mean, when you start talking about, they want to represent the broad values of the community, you're, you're saying that they're not, and I don't think we know enough yet to say that they're, they're not. So I would rather use the one above, whereas monetary and non-monetary contributions the town of Durham provides to O R Y A.
This one.
And take out makes the town complicit, you know, the rest of that line.
Okay. How about if we said, whereas the, because the town of Durham provides O R Y A with monetary and non-monetary contribution, and wants to make certain that these actions taken by O R Y A are appropriate?
Yeah.
I just don't like the word saying complicit, you know?
Are you, I'm confused which number six you're on, the suggested addition or the original six?
The change two. So.
He just modified the change two.
Yeah, so six is deleted.
The change two was like.
This is gone, right? Losing the one that has contested in it.
That was.
Coming in here.
Completely. Okay. So there's only, okay, this is going to be five here, not six, right? Because this is gone.
Madam Chair, I move we extend the meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All's in favor?
Yep.
I'm, maybe, could you read the, could you read it again? Because I've, I've lost you.
Why don't you read the whole document, okay? Start from scratch, let's get this right. What are you going to keep?
So.
Right. It's the first four as is.
Yeah, first four is, is the fifth deleted, the sixth paragraph, which is now the fifth, where it's a change to, it says, whereas, because the town of Durham provides O R Y A with monetary and non-monetary contributions, it wants to be certain the actions taken by O R Y A are appropriate. And then it would continue, the, the therefore, and then the cha, change there is, moreover, the release of funding in future years is contingent on the Durham Town Council being able to appoint one representative of their choosing to the O R Y A Board of Directors.
I have a little bit of further change to that. Because we took out the incident, the last one is, is, in the third line, conducting of, an investig, conducted investigation into, I would put, the recent alleged incident involving baseball drafting.
Okay, Todd is.
That's fine, I'll let, let them.
Okay. Provide it with.
You got it all, Todd?
I don't.
He doesn't.
I totally don't, no.
So, could I, Cardin, could I read five? If I think it's.
Okay, he's going to read it, but.
I think five, and correct me if I'm wrong, therefore, the town of Durham will not release already approved funding for O R Y A until the town council is satisfied with the outcome of an independently conducted investigation into the recent alleged incident.
Okay, stop. Into the recently, recent alleged incident.
Yep.
Involving baseball drafting.
Base, or baseball team drafting.
Baseball team drafting, right. Baseball team drafting, and any remedial steps that are deemed to be necessary. And so we cross the moreover out, right? You didn't want a moreover.
No, moreover.
Okay, moreover, the release of funding in future.
I think I would still say in 2019 and future years, because I.
Could distinguish from 2018?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so the release of funding in 2019 and future years is contingent on the town council of Durham being able to appoint one representative of their choosing to the O R Y A Board of Directors.
So just one change. Moreover, it should be, not the release of funding, but it should be moreover, funding in 2009.
Okay, right.
2019.
Right, funding, okay. Moreover, funding in.
The purpose of putting someone, we appoint on, from my understanding, they, they have policies and procedures at O R Y A to deal with this. The question is, are they, from what I've read, and I, maybe you've seen something else, but the president has said, they have standards they're supposed to meet, and, and so forth. The purpose of our putting a representative is to make sure that they actually comply with the, with their own charter, and, and I guess we would review the charter as well or something like that, right?
And I think also to be a, I don't know what the word would be, but an, an eye for us, so it's someone who could come back to the town council as an independent person and say, you know, this is what's going on, just as I come back from land stewardship and.
The question I, in my mind, though, is this, this organization is huge, is it time for professional management? I mean, you, you're talking about really serious issues about liabilities, for example, that someone might get if they were, had been through a program of recreation. I'm not saying tonight we should do that, but it, it's a big operation and a lot of money, and can it keep running as, as, with, with volunteers? And without that, it, was it bound to happen, what, what happened, for example? Without, without a director or a professional executive?
There is a professional director.
Professional director. Oh, they have, they have one?
Aid, yes.
Okay. And that's.
Matthew Gloode is their director.
He's been, he's been in the.
I think this is the second year.
I think his response was the very initial response, it was a very short response, and I think, and I think, Todd, you reflected on that response, right?
Maybe that's.
I'm still unsure about what's now the new fifth paragraph. We had the, whereas, because the town of Durham provides O R Y A with monetary and non-monetary contributions, it wants to be certain that actions taken by O R Y A are appropriate.
Are appropriate.
Representing.
That's it.
Question, do you have thoughts about the school district having a representative as well? Because the school district does not provide any monetary contributions, yet O R Y A uses the school's facilities.
I think it's the school's call.
I think this, I, I think that, I can't speak for the school, I, that's like, we're going to have to sit down and talk about this. If, my, my personal feeling, as an individual only, is yes, we should, because, again, on the school side, we are even at higher, it's a very strict threshold that we run with laws, and I think for us to feel comfortable, at least for me to feel comfortable, I think we would have to have a represent, representative, but that's a discussion that's going to happen.
On the other hand, Dr. Moore seemed to take comfort in the fact that you don't.
Yeah.
And also, I'm wondering, who else do we give a lot of money to that we don't have representatives on, besides, besides the library? Who else?
Well, the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, but we have representation there on the board. We give small amounts of money to local charitable organizations.
But no one thinks we have any liability or anything?
No, it hasn't.
But, I mean, do we need someone on the library?
The library is governed by the state statutes, and in fact, like, tonight, the council did appoint an alternate to the library board, not the regular members, but the alternates, and the regular members are appointed by, they're voted in by the public of Durham, so there's accountability there.
We can be our spy.
Yeah. I think this representation also would serve a benefit.
But aren't the, aren't the board members of O R Y A voted in? Now, it's all selected or voluntary, you just volunteer?
We don't really know, do we?
I don't know.
I'm asking.
I mean, by the way, we're giving them a lot of money, and I think that, you know, we look at, why did, oh, why does it exist in the first place? Now, I would assume just to fill a need that we didn't have in the community years and years ago with our own recreation department. I mean, some towns' recreation departments do what all this does. You know, we could do that, I think it would be a difficult task to bring it all in, in-house, but, but it, it exists, and I think that it's, it's in their best interest for us to have a representative on it. I think it's just a, it's, you know, it's just a, the, the, over time, the, the needs change, and the, the amount of money, and everything, it's just, why not have representation? We wouldn't be sitting here all flustered if we'd already had it.
We wouldn't be sitting here all flustered if Kenny hadn't brought it up.
It's a civic responsibility.
Okay, so, are you going, do we want to vote on this as amended, or do you want to bring a clean copy for the next meeting? What do you want to do?
Next meeting's in three weeks.
Oh.
I think we're good.
Should we just vote on it, then?
Amended.
Okay, you, you want to move it?
So I would move this Durham Town Council resolution as we wrote and drafted at the table.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. All's in favor? Thank you very much, Kenny. Do I have a motion?
You do. Move per turn.
Seconded. Everybody's, all's in favor.
My arm is tired from raving.
Shh.